It's that time ladies and gentlemen. Make your way to the dance floor.
I'm addicted to your vibe. And I wanna get to know you tonight. Baby, come closer. No rush, girl, take your time. Put your high heels on, let's slide. I will know you. We can step, slide and rock. To the rhythm, put your body on me. Baby, let's groove. We can spin a little dip. I hope you feel me pushing all my weight up for you. Cause I'm in the mood for you. We can step, slide and rock. To the rhythm, put your body on me. Baby, let's groove. We can spin a little dip. I hope you feel me pushing all my weight up for you. Cause I'm in the mood for you.
Sipping as I listen, catch my rhythm and the tempo. Ripple me with tension just a little. Put my mental in a pickle. Your vibe creates a riddle in my mind. Trying to decide, how did I find mystery guy? Can't describe how. Our bodies rocking, fingers locking, na na. Your eyes when we on chill like Sunday top and uh huh. I like that. I write back, read my body language, you recite that. How it's been like, yeah, but we shining like diamonds, no motion, we grinding, we hurt them so violently, killing them silently. Your hands caress me, your ways that don't address me. Impeccably impressive, yeah, your moves is no contesting, duh. Subliminal, I pray to plentiful, this make a minimal. The paradigm we setting ain't no typical cynical one, just to go digital, we liberal, imperial. You wanna cuff, I'll be your criminal, you dig it?
I'm addicted to your vibe. And I wanna get to know you tonight. Baby, come closer. No rush, girl, take your time. Put your high heels on, let's slide. I will know you. We can step, slide and rock. To the rhythm, put your body on me. Baby, let's groove. We can spin a little dip. I hope you feel me pushing all my weight up for you. Cause I'm in the mood for you. We can step, slide and rock. To the rhythm, put your body on me. Baby, let's groove. We can spin a little dip. I hope you feel me pushing all my weight up for you. Cause I'm in the mood for you.
I should be your only fan. I should be your only fan. The only fan to ever see you naked. Oh baby. Want to be the man that you get close to. Kiss and hold your body like I'm close to. Always on your life, can't get a hold of you. Attention's the only thing that you're responding to. Am I a fool? Acting like this shit don't face me, what we gonna do? Damn, your mentions going crazy. It takes two. Did you know we rocking? I know it's toxic to keep you boxed in, but I'm locked in. Oh god damn. I should be your only fan. I should be your only fan. The only fan to ever see you naked. Oh baby. I should be your only fan. I should be your only fan. The only fan to ever see you naked. Oh baby. Can't take you home for the holidays. What would my mama say? Can't subscribe to this shit that you do. Where your mama, I know she don't approve. I just want the innocent you. I'm just a little selfish with you. I be needing all of you.
If loving you is wrong, I wanna be right, don't wanna be right. To me, she just mad tight to me, she just like, I wanna sleep with her at night. Hopping, holding tight. We were meant to be, think I'm out, make I'm out right. But we would bust a fight, no Tina and night. We like Patrice and Remy. Yeah, my ex is mad, but that's the past, we leave the past a memory. All the sass and rummy. But I know what I got, when you got something new. Hoes don't always fly. Wanna call each spot. Big, you forgot. I don't think nah. I like what I got. About to put my shit at stake. For a taco. You hot like jalapeno, cheesy yaks is madly nacho. I can be wrong, but it feel right. 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 We go so good together. But where we go from here? Let's get away, take a trip away. We can go somewhere, but we gotta go nowhere. I just wanna be next to you. Cause we can act, bitch, we're limited to leave and sexual. And I don't care what they don't like about you. I'ma mess with you. I see the best, see. So I don't really care, so I'm thinking less, see. For you, I really got a thing to me, you special. Yeah, you got class, but you pass the test when I'm sexy, yeah. Got some dumb head, I swear don't know how she passed in school. Got that grade A love when I be you. Fool, I see you, ride a D till I'm O E Y F two. I can be wrong, but it feel right. I can be wrong, but it feel right. I can be wrong, but it feel.
This is another 419 grind exclusive. Wake up Toledo. Wake, wake your ass up. You're listening to the 419 grinds, rise and grind morning show. Toledo, ref your city, visit us online at the 419grind.com.
419 grind network podcast. Network of podcasts, actually. It's Monday morning, good grinding morning to all those that's in the rain. Be careful, it's drizzling out there. It is your boy, the big fella with the big smile, Big Trees, in the studio right here in Toledo, Ohio. With Miss Leah Renee, good morning Leah.
Good morning, how are you Trees?
Oh man, I feel good. It was a pretty, pretty decent weekend. We had, had a chance to get some things done that needed to be done. Uh, how was your weekend?
Pretty good, pretty good. I was at home all weekend studying, so it was kinda boring, but you know, you'll have that.
Oh, well, sometimes being, uh, getting a chance to rest a little bit and just get caught up on some of the things that you need to get caught up on is not bad at all.
Definitely. What'd you do this weekend?
Well, we kicked it off with, uh, Greater New Psalmist.
Yes.
Over on Friday.
Yeah, on Friday, that was a great day.
Yes, where they did the grocery giveaway.
Yes.
And had a huge turnout.
Oh, that was right.
Wrapping our arms around the city of Toledo and all those that participated.
Yes.
And receive groceries. I ain't gonna even say boxes of food, they got groceries.
Yes, and, um, you know, special shots out and love to all the volunteers.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, all of the volunteers over there at Greater New Psalmist because they really came together and, um, you know, worked hard and made sure everybody was good and had what they needed. And it was just a really, really nice event.
And you know what Leah, people often times say, uh, you gotta be in need. There was some people over there, you know you wasn't needy, but you came and got you some groceries, so we ain't tripping on you.
Yeah, you know, because what was so, what was so dope about it was that Dr. Breon Hall said, um, you know, when he was promoting it, he was like, um, even if you're not in need, if you just don't feel like going grocery shopping this week, come on out. And so that's awesome that, yeah, you know, that's awesome that, that he said that and he opened it up to people, you know? You don't have to necessarily be in need, you know, just come.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, we wanna thank all those grinders, those that's watching us on the Facebook Live, those that's on iHeart and you're listening in. Please drive safe. Also, we'd like to thank our sponsors, Lima Humadot. Recovery is possible. If you're going through some type of addiction and need help, there are people who love you. Please call the Joshua Treatment Center at 419-222-4474. And, uh, with that being said, Leah, you, you just mentioned, uh, about your weekend. This was a weekend that, uh, I, I got a chance to see just through social media. There was a lot of things going on in the world, uh, as always. There were, here in Toledo, there was another pop-up with our girl, uh, Unique and Tish. They had another pop, uh, pop-up at the Spotlight.
Okay.
Uh, it was very nice. I saw pictures and lives of those that attended, all the minority businesses and services. There's a lot of people Leah that is just really doing their thing as far as their minority business and owners, being there.
I love it.
Being black owners.
Yes, I, it's so inspiring and, and I just love it because there's so many people in our city, you know, doing, um, great things. And it just, um, shines a great, a positive, a more positive light on us, you know? Because, um, so many people have, you know, so many negative things to say about Toledo, which there are negative things that go on here, but there's negative things that go on everywhere. I mean, that's what I've, that's what I learned moving away three different times. You know, I used to be one of those people that was like, oh, Toledo, you know, you know, but it's like, you move away and you realize home is where it's at, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
And it's all about your why. And I wanna know why it was cold last night raining.
Yeah.
So what can we expect with the weather this morning?
Yeah, you know, that fall brisk weather is definitely here and winter is on the way. Because before I get into the weather today, I just wanna let y'all know that next week, we are gonna be seeing some snow already.
Already?
Already.
Now, expected, unexpected.
I'm, I'm just gonna go down the line of what the weather's gonna be like, because this is real Ohio fall like weather, okay? Today it's rainy, currently about forty-three degrees. Um, definitely wanna take your time and be safe out there on the roads. It's gonna be cloudy and rainy most of the week, most of the rest of the week. And, um, Thursday and Friday, it's gonna get up to, Thursday to be like sixty-eight, Friday it's gonna be around seventy-five.
But it's gonna be raining?
It's gonna be thunderstorming. Not only raining, but thunderstorming. And then Wednesday, it's gonna be, we're gonna get snow. So yeah, we got some great weather to look forward to over the next week, some real live Toledo weather. Um, you know, as far as traffic is concerned, there aren't any accidents or incidents right now, but like we said, it is wet out there, it is raining. Definitely take your time. There's still that, uh, construction going on on I-280 and on I-75, so take your time, please take your time, be safe. You know, no distracted driving, um, you know, just make sure you're getting where you gotta go safely.
And we thank you for that Leah again.
You're welcome.
Uh, as it is, we got a great show. We had a great week last week, had some great information, great guests. Nobody else is doing it like the number one urban podcast show in the country. Uh, Leah, I believe we will be voted best podcast show.
Absolutely. I mean, why wouldn't we be?
I know, right? Like if y'all didn't, y'all was just hating, as well as the rising, uh, the best anchor duo, as you always mentioned.
Yes.
We will be voted the best anchor duo. One of the big highlights this weekend Leah was a huge fight in the boxing world. Uh, there were two huge names and let's just say the Latino and Hispanic.
Ay, ay papi.
They standing up right now because Tafimo Lopez be arguably, arguably, and it's, and a lot of people are arguing, but they are saying he is probably one of the greatest boxers. Uh, his name, we call him Lomo, uh, Lomachenko. He's from the Ukraine, but he had like four belts. He was.
Wow.
Uh, he was, they called him the, the Matrix because he was very good. It was the light, lightest weight at a hundred and thirty-five.
Oh wow.
And.
Also, they're small.
They were small. And the, the, uh, Lopez, who he fought this Saturday, uh, twenty-three years old. Lomachenko is, I think like twenty, uh, I don't wanna say his age, but to lose to, for Lomachenko to lose to Lopez. When I say Las Vegas, people then got big checks. It is crazy right now. And he's from Brooklyn when he came out to the, uh, when he came out to the ring, his song was Biggie, Brooklyn's in the house. And they just kept remixing it and.
Also, yeah, I know Brooklyn's going crazy.
Oh man, Brooklyn is.
And then one thing about, uh, Latinos is like, they are, they are big on supporting one another and being there for.
It's crazy Leah.
When, uh, Floyd Mayweather and Pacquiao, that big fight happened. I was, I was living out in LA at the time.
Okay.
And, you know, I was out, I felt on the fence, you know, cause I'm Mexican and black and I didn't know who to root for, you know? I didn't know what you wanted to go for, but out there, it was like, out in the place that I was working, it was all Mexican.
Yeah.
La, Latina women and, and customers too, you know? So they went, they was going so hard for Pacquiao, like, and so, you know, those Latinos, like, we go hard, you know, we go hard too. African-Americans do too, like, so it's like a, you know, it's like a.
And it's, it wages a war. Uh, this, uh, Lo, Lomachenko is a Ukrainian, but he was undefeated. He was one of the world's greatest, he had one of the world's greatest.
They thought he was gonna take it.
Absolutely. The underdog got it off.
Yeah.
And Leah, when I say.
Those are the best ones too, when the underdog takes it.
Oh my goodness, they went, and it was kinda crazy because usually you're in a packed out arena and you could hear the fans. So it was a little different with this social distancing in our sports now, but Leah, when I say he twenty-three and one thing about, I would say, uh, Latino and Hispanic box, they could take some hits.
Oh yeah.
Man, they don't mind getting hit with.
They some dog.
Amigo, amigo, hey, amigo, hey. Uh, I remember I used to work, uh, at a place in Illinois, it was called the Bedding Experts Leah. And I didn't know much Spanish. I learned all the bad words. Poquito. Mucho poquito. So Leah, when, uh, we working in this warehouse and we have to, uh, uh, get our shipments of beds and things and they used to always be like, negro, negro, nigga, I'm delayed negro. So I thought they was calling me a nigga. Leah, I used to get mad, like, I, I would've told the supervisor, like, they keep calling me a nigga, man. And the supervisor said, no, they're not calling you a nigga, it's negro. And he told me that it means black and they kept saying grande, grande, you're a big negro.
Grande negro.
I'm delayed grande negro, so.
I got a funny story about that, but I think I'm gonna keep that to myself.
Uh oh.
Body feeling no type of way.
She ready to a grande negro. Oh, this is a, you expect, you expect, oh, look at.
All I know is that my sister told me of a story is that like, when we was little girls, we used to get called little negras. And I was like, wow, really? She was like, no, you don't remember that? I was like, no, I don't remember that. And she was like, yeah, I was like, wow.
So they used to teach, teach me?
So it's definitely a Latino thing, but it's good to know that it wasn't necessarily a bad thing.
It was, once I found out, gaya te negro. Chingy to madre, no, no mami's way on my grande Vega. They used to be cussing me out. Pichi horto.
Damn, you know more than I do.
Chingao ese.
Yo, I know that one.
Yeah. A good thing we're not translating and this is a caption, this is the all-new Rising Grind Morning Show.
I know, I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man, you know, I, I love you, I don't wanna talk to hate.
Okay, okay. I'm a man here. I adore me a more. Uh, that's what we do right here in the 419 grind studios. We have, uh, uh, right here on the all-new Rising Grind Morning Show, just good vibes Leah, just a little bit. As we kinda get out of that sports world, the Browns got they butts kicked last night by the Steelers.
My mom was happy, cause she's a Steelers fan. Yeah, she's a Steelers, big time Steelers fan.
The Bengals lost to the Colts, but the Lions won, so all you Michigan folks that's kinda rude, edging on that, they might like the Detroit Lions.
Wait a minute, the Lions won?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Hey, you know, cause that's, that's unusual.
Yeah. Uh, as well as now we're into the World Series. It's kinda crazy Leah, that sports didn't kinda, already basketball is over, cause right now.
I know, that's so crazy, that that's already over.
Getting ready for the basketball season, it's over. A couple of college football teams like Ohio State and Michigan is coming back. Uh, as well as some, the, uh, World Series and the LA Dodgers. You mentioned being out in the LA.
That's so crazy, I thought the baseball was like over, I thought that was like a springtime thing.
Yeah, they're in the World Series because of the shut down.
Yeah, wow.
So what's happening is the LA Dodgers are now, uh, in the World Series.
Okay.
Uh, the LA Dodgers beat the, uh, Braves last night, so Atlanta was, you know, a little disappointed. And then the Tampa Bay Devil Ray. So the World Series is the LA Dodgers and the Tampa Bay Devil Ray. So you got.
Okay.
East Coast versus West Coast.
Oh, okay.
You don't like, you, even if you ain't paying it too much attention, who you giving it to? Who you saying, the Dodgers? You giving it to LA?
Yeah, cause I'm an LA girl, you know?
I knew that was coming.
LA is like my second home, I love it.
I knew it was coming. What you miss most about LA?
Oh my God, I would say like the views.
Okay.
And just like the atmosphere, like, I'm telling you, when I lived in LA, it was not like, there's not a day when you don't feel like, when you get up and feel like, I don't wanna go today. Like, you know how there's some days you wake up here and you're like, man, I just don't feel like it today. I just wanna stay in a bed. Like, there wasn't not one day that, well, I, there was a couple depressed days because of my daughter was in Ohio still. So outside of that, there wasn't one day where I didn't wake up like, I gotta go get it. Like, and I was up early in the morning every day, taking the subway, the buses, you know, the, I didn't have no car out there. So I was walking subway, bus, you know, and it was just an amazing experience and I love it and I can't wait to get back out there.
And it's, it is, especially when you live in those cities that have a little bit more of a hustle, like we call it here on the grinding. Uh, LA, New York, DC, Baltimore, like when you know.
But hustlers and go-getters everywhere you go, but a lot of fake and phoniness too, so it's like, you gotta, it's like, you gotta watch out.
What you mean?
Cause in LA, you know, it's a whole, uh, it's a whole lot of, you know, everybody, somebody, you know?
Oh yeah. And really your ass ain't nothing, you just.
Yeah, you ain't no damn body for real. And then, you know, you got gullible people who come from, you know, small cities or small places with these, you know, um, gullible mindsets or these, you know, unrealistic mindsets, you know, thinking that we're gonna go out there and make it, make it big, you know? And, you know, you run into situations and experiences, but I will say, I don't regret that experience for anything. I, I mean, you know, it was great, it was a great experience, you know, so.
And usually most people, and I will say this, uh, and I, this was a statement that I made, uh, people don't like you, you better keep it to yourself. And the reason why I say that is because when you live in certain places and you didn't got out of, outside of the 419, man, you could take on different challenges and know that you good. That's why sometimes if a person doesn't travel or we don't expose our kids and our families to seeing the world, it does become a overwhelming and depressing.
Yeah.
Um, mindset, because like you said, you lived out in California, you got a chance to see a, and AZ, you talking about.
And Atlanta, I've lived in all three places.
Absolutely.
You know, people, I see a lot of people from Toledo, you know, who have never gotten out or never gotten a chance to relocate or anything like that. They, they make a lot of like, you know, they throw a lot of shade at people who've like moved away and come home and they're like, oh, you know, you, you went, you know? But it's like, at the end of the day, like, I feel bad for you for not, you know, taking a chance and stepping out on faith and going and experiencing something. Cause I don't regret any move I made, you know what I mean? I moved three times. If I chose to stay in any one of them places, I could have, but for the benefit of my kids, it was best for my kids to be here where our family is. So each time, that's what really brought me back. But every time I moved, I learned something new, I met new people, still got relationships to this day with people in different cities, you know what I'm saying? So I'm, I'm networked and affiliated all over the nation. You know what I'm saying? Like, still got people out in LA, you know what I mean? And shout out to my family out there, Karina and Uncle Dee and Ron, Rodney and all them.
And when you know you have, uh, when you have those opportunities, it definitely puts another, uh, adds another little value on your life.
Yeah.
Uh, I was looking in the, uh, hip hop news, uh, Kanye West is looking to do a song with the baby. Uh, and which I think would be pretty dope because the baby now has the song with that justice piece and Kanye on his political piece.
I think that's gonna be a dope collab.
Man, I think with his creativity, with Kanye's creativity, um, and the baby knowing who Kanye way is.
And the baby's flow.
Yeah, I think, uh.
Cause I don't necessarily like Kanye's flow, but like you said, he has, um, stupendous creativity, you know what I'm saying? So between that and the baby, the baby's got the flow in the, in the, in the swag, you know? So them two put together, I think that's gonna be crazy.
Oh Leah, I think that, I agree with you. You know, one of the things that, that they talk about, and this could be a opening to a question of ours, uh, before we speak to and give, uh, credence to all of our grinders that's listening to us on all of our platforms, Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts, YouTube. Thank you so much. Leah, do you think, or should, should I say, do we pay too much attention if, on social media, if somebody doesn't follow us? Cause there's a big thing in, in the, uh, with some of our female celebrities. And I know one of the most notable ones that was over the weekend, Drake stopped following TI on social media and they're making it a big deal. Is it that huge of a big deal if somebody stopped following or you don't rock with somebody on social media?
I mean, I think, I think it's something behind it, you know what I'm saying? And that's, that's the, that's the job of the blogs and the, and the, you know, the bloggers and the people, you know, in the media and whatever. They're gonna make a story, like, they gotta make a story, that's what we do, you know? So, um, but when you see something like that, people who pay attention to that, like who's unfollowing and who's not following, like, there's a reason behind that, like Drake, if you've been following TI all this time and all of a sudden out of nowhere, you make, I mean, it's, it's something behind that. But, you know, of course they're gonna make it way bigger than what it is. I mean, maybe it really wasn't nothing at all, or I don't know, I think it was something though, like. Didn't they both, uh, mess with, um, what's that real pretty chick name, uh, the real pretty video vixen, um?
Not sure.
Ah, goodness. Bernice Burgos, didn't they both, I think they both.
I'm gonna do one of your numbers, yeah, yeah.
I think they both had a situation with her, so yeah, maybe.
No, no, but to your point of that, Leah, and I see our interns, JB is getting a little, uh, sitting up a little bit. DeWanna's sitting up, we're talking about this social, social media. Uh, I do, DeWanna weigh in real quick, while those that's listening. Is it big for, uh, someone to stop being followed on social media? Does that mean something?
Yeah, I mean, it means something. Damn, this mic, let me see my. Yeah, it, it means some, I, I wouldn't care if I was TI, but it's definitely something behind that.
Right, right. And I'm sure TI doesn't care, but it's, like he said, it's definitely something behind that.
So on our, on our grinders this morning, does it mean, do you get offended when somebody unfriends you, stopped following you on social media? Cause that's really.
What about this Trees? Okay, I got a question. So say you and one of your friends, someone you're close with, had like a little falling out and this person unfriended you. And then like y'all end up working things out, whatever the situation is, y'all get back cool and that person never send you another friend request. Should you feel some type of way about that?
See, with me, it's a little different because I was like that with my son's mother. We was cool and this shit got crazy. And she was like, no, we're not friends. So, uh, I, I learned from that relationship on social media, and again, I'm a little different, not to give and give too much attention to social media.
Right, that is true, I think we do.
The internet is killing relationships.
It's, it's killing humanity as we know it. I mean, like, it's, 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 I don't know, it's the devil.
I feel like, as, as men, we, you shouldn't get into that, like, as a, as a man, I don't get in all that Facebook stuff, like, that's some female stuff.
Right, I agree.
My girl gonna unfollow me and follow me back, I'm not gonna unfollow no man.
Right, right. I, I feel you, I agree.
JB's kinda.
What you got to say JB, you want hit the mic?
Is it a big deal when somebody unfriends you or unfollow you on social media?
I don't do social media like that.
So, and this, and so JB, our intern, she's kinda like, she's kinda saying, that ain't a big piece of her, like, I'm not gonna get unrattled about, uh, what we see on social media and that's why I often say.
I think too, it depends on like who it is, right?
Not for me Leah, but I'm saying there might be some.
For like some people, you know what I'm saying?
As the person, I mean, Drake and them, that's their life, they live for, like, they social, that's what they do, so.
So to Leah's point.
They get mad when they don't share each other mixtape.
Right, exactly.
And, and again, I, I, I'm just in a season of. And, and again, I, I, I'm just in a season of protecting my energy, right Leah? There's a lot of things to get mad about.
Oh, yeah.
And as you just said, the internet has caused so much friction.
Yeah.
In people's, met, in, in people's lives. It's like, man, when do you pull out of getting frustrated with who's following you? And I know there's some people on our Facebook this morning that's watching. What's some of our grinders saying this morning, Leah? Who should we just acknowledge and say, hey, we appreciate you listening?
Well, of course, we got Mr. Coleman on the live. We got Nikisha Smith on the live. Keep the shares, hey boo. Um, I, for some reason, I can't see any other comments, but there's other people tuned in. So I apologize to you guys for not saying your names. I just can't see any other names right now. But shout out to all our listeners and viewers cuz we know you guys are tuned in and we love you and appreciate you and, um, you know.
Sorry, any of them, what's some of them? Everybody just pretty much saying good morning?
Yeah, they were just saying, saying good morning. That's, I don't know if I have like a delay or something on with my comments.
No, it's the way your phone set up. It's bootlegged. So listen, okay for her phone, y'all. So listen, again, if you're listening on, uh, be, be willing to call in, call in and talk. Does it matter if somebody unfollows you or unfriends you on social media like Leah and our intern has said, that typically means something. But if, if you are pursuing happiness, right? If you are, if you got something going on in your life, Leah, I can't worry about who ain't liking me, who aren't following me. Uh, I, I noticed that though, we do pay attention. I'm not saying I don't pay attention.
Yeah, for sure.
Cuz for example, on Facebook, I got five thousand friends. When that thing get down to four ninety-nine, I'll be looking for, I'll be going to my requests to make sure I can.
Yeah, see, that's one thing I don't do. I've never even looked to see. Like I don't really care. I mean, I wouldn't even notice whoever did, has unfriended me. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even know. Like I don't pay no attention. I wouldn't know, don't care, like.
Not on Facebook, but Instagram, I definitely notice.
I don't know. I, yeah, I don't know that's on.
So when you say.
At all.
But I, and is it, so it's, I don't know. I think we, we playing a double. We playing both ends of the stick, Leah, because I might watch if my uh, friend, friends uh, limits drop. You look at who's not on your social media cuz you would say it sometime like, oh, I ain't popping, ain't nobody on here. So we do pay attention to certain elements of it. Uh, but I try to not get frustrated if I see my, now if I see I done lost like a hundred people in there, uh, what the hell did I do?
Yeah, I, I don't know. You know, I've realized like, and I, I agree with what you're saying. Like I think it does get to a point where it's like, cuz you get to a place. Like I used to be, um, you know, more concerned about that. Like, oh, I, you know? But now I've just gotten to a place where it's like, I pay more attention now. I'm gonna, I wanna focus my energy in on the people who do actually tune in, on the people who do actually care, on the people who do actually support me. Like F the people who don't. Like y'all wanna act like y'all don't see me, y'all see me. And that's okay. Like, you know, but I love the people who are actually supporting me cuz there are people who really tune into every single one of my shows, who share my stuff, who tune in to this show, you know, cuz I'm on it. And I appreciate.
Who is it? Who, who is it? Who, who is it? Who, who tuning in cuz Leah Renee is on the show?
In particular, I'm just saying.
No, no, just, like, look, she got stuck. She was like.
I don't know. You know, just like there's certain people who tune in for you.
No, Leah, you got people really tuning in. Juvi wouldn't have got his ass up if they didn't know you. So shout out to Grab It Go with Juvi, uh, calling that.
But you know him too. So that, again, I think it was probably a, had a lot to do with you. You know what I'm saying? Like, yeah, you know, so it's like. So it's like, yeah, it's just, you know, um, I, I appreciate that love. Like I feel that. Like so now that has directed me more towards being worried about them. Like I don't need to focus on the people who hating cuz I've been getting hated on my whole life. Like, you know?
I wouldn't say focus, I wouldn't say not focus on them. Just thank them. Like.
Yeah, I pray for them every day and.
I got a handshake that I normally do cuz you can't get mad at all the haters. You need a balance. So I need some people. If everybody in the world said DeWanna and Leah and JB, you're doing good, you're doing good, you're listening, you wouldn't know what the hell you need to work on. So hi haters, how y'all doing? Cuz y'all see, y'all listening to the number one urban podcast in the country.
Period, huh?
And, and it's not that you have to hate. You might not just like what I bring to the table.
Yeah.
But I'm cool with that cuz I don't like what your ass bring either. So we got something in common. And when you comfortable about being you, DeWanna, you can use the balance.
That's right.
I like when people hate me actually, honestly. I like.
I've just gotten so used to it. Like I'm just, I'm used to more people not liking me than people liking me. Like it is what it is, you know, and.
It's generally like that though.
Yeah. Okay, there go some of our comments.
Yeah. Also wanna say good morning to Councilwoman McPherson. How you doing this morning? Hey Lexi, congratulations to Lexi and uh, we are looking to support you. Would love for you to be a proud sponsor. She just opened her, uh, with along with assistance from Chris McBrer Village Academy, which works, it is a school uh, for young kids. She also does daycare with Miss Mary's daycare, but they have just opened up a village academy. Want you to come on and talk about that and where that is.
Yes, absolutely.
Educating our future, Leah.
Man, that's what it's all about.
One of the things that I'm gonna uh, get back to and which I really enjoy, Leah, is giving tools to our youth and young adults, basic skills. How to manage your, your, your life.
Yeah.
How to navigate your life because with this social media piece, I mean, this social distance piece, just think about our kids. How many of them gonna need somebody to help navigate them through some of the life challenges and not get frustrated and throw in the towel? Uh, you talked about when we had a vote for Lucas County Sheriff Earl Mack, you said Leah, I heard all you, all you heard with his walk from uh, UT Police, Homeland Security and these other uh, law enforcement.
Major journey he's been on.
You said you, you heard his grind.
Yeah.
So we gonna have to show, help, educate, don't get frustrated in teaching tomorrow how to grind.
Yes, absolutely.
But you know what Leah? When you grind, I'm talking about like grind and you see the word and you like, damn, I did it.
Man.
It, man, that is a.
It's no feeling like that in the world. When you can sit back and be like, I did that. Like, you know, obviously with the grace of God, you know, but yeah, I did that. You know what I'm saying? Like there's no greater feeling. Absolutely.
I think, uh, even to your point Leah, uh, of, and this is the all new rising grind morning show, but just knowing that who, I said a lot and I, you just mentioned it. When you know who you are and whoms you are, and when you got God's grace on you to kick your week off on a Monday morning and you know you're blessed by the best. We can go to church and we can have a spirit. So if you, yeah, well, 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 this CSD can feel good, brother. All right. And sister.
Sister Leah Renee.
Sister Leah Renee.
So while we on the topic, yes, our very own sponsor, Dr. Breon Hall. Yesterday I didn't get to make it into the service, but I always watch him online if I can't make it in. And he talked about, you know, uh, the topic of his sermon was the fall didn't break, um, I'm sorry, the fall didn't, something about the fall didn't end it. You know what I mean? Like you took a fall, you took a deep fall, but it didn't take you out.
Wait a minute, on Monday? He said what?
You took a fall.
Okay, then.
But that fall ain't take you out. You still standing.
Still standing.
It's Monday morning.
No.
October nineteen, twenty twenty, and you still here through a pandemic, through a shutdown.
Danny McCorkley, you just stand.
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 And be sure.
Yes. He saw the best in me. Okay.
Oh, that's the ladies version.
Whenever, whenever. Could only see the worst in me.
I know, that's right. I know somebody is clapping they hands. Somebody is in they car and you are waving your hand.
Yes.
Cuz you know what God has done.
God has been amazing.
And when he has pulled you from the back, the deeps of the sea.
That fall, but that fall didn't take you out.
When your haters said that you couldn't do it.
And you still here.
And the, the ones that you love, those that you were close to said that you wasn't gonna make it.
And your haters woke up every day praying on your downfall.
Oh my goodness. And God said, I'm not through with you yet.
And you know what we said?
So when you said your mess turned into your message.
Listen, your mess turns into your message and it's a beautiful thing. And you know, you know, it's like, we laughing or whatever. It's this laughing giggles, but it's all real, what we talking about. Like this is serious stuff. Like it's so true. I done took so many falls. I know you have. I know we all have took so many falls, but yet here we are. It's like, we like two months away from twenty twenty ending already and we made it. We all made it through this pandemic.
Standing tall. And you know what Leah? This ain't no play. Man, when the God I serve, I have fun. My, I have a relationship.
I do too.
So when you have a relationship, Leah.
Yes.
Man, I ain't got to talk the way you talk cuz I can, how the buddy, ya, 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 shat, ta, ta, yeah. I can Yokohama Mitsubishi. I can talk in tongue too. Cat and act the nolly. Lord know what I want. I drive a Ford Mustang, I fuck, drive a Ford Mustang right now, a Neon. Uh, but I will say again, good morning to DJ Lou, uh, Amelia Sosa, Al the Alexander with Rocket Nutrition. Thank you. Jasmine McCoy, hey Delana, Preston and Reece Vias. What's up?
Big trees.
What's up though?
About that Rocket Nutrition, man. Them drinks slap.
Okay, okay.
Them T-bombs.
Oh my goodness. You gotta go to Rocket Nutrition.
I gotta go get me one.
Or a smoothie, but them T-bombs, Rocket Nutrition, On Door, they are also looking to consider to be a sponsor. And Leah, I, I think that is so, so appreciative to those that's grinding with us every morning, the small businesses that need the support, are looking for us to support and they're supporting us.
Yes, such a blessing.
Team win Leah, that's a beautiful thing.
Beautiful thing. I love it. Uh, can we do some birthday shout outs?
Yeah, go ahead.
We need a happy birthday button now.
Yeah, we gotta give them. It's your birthday, yeah.
It's your birthday. Hey, is, uh, Libra, is this still Libra season or has it switched over yet?
I don't know. Let's ask our intern. What's our, what's our season? We still in Libra season? But until they get that, who's our birthdays that we wanna, definitely wanna make sure that we?
Well, of course, happy birthday to my sister, Sheena Coats. She's up in Detroit. Shout out to her. I love her. Happy birthday. I wish you many blessings, my sis. I love you. Uh, my, my girl, T Brantley, she's my sister too. Also out in AZ, thirty-seven years old today. I love you, girl. Thank you for your service. My sis, Nicole James, Lance Everett, L Cortez, Brenda Sun, Charles Hudson, T Dab, Juan Jones, Daniel Tiana, Ralph Boyd, Alicia Noble, my girl. Hey girl, happy birthday. Mo Ricketts, Tra La La La, Oliver, Jimmy Bradley. Happy birthday.
That's what's so big and we're gonna do that Leah, and I'm actually glad that you set the tone. What we're gonna do right here on the all new rising grind morning show is we're gonna make sure that we send our birthdays, anniversaries. Uh, missing you, who do you miss? We're gonna be able to acknowledge them. We're gonna create a digital promo for you uh, and yours. And you're gonna be able to see them and play it right here on all new rising grind morning show. But hey, we gotta go pay some bills. We gotta get out of here, Leah. We got a great show. Don't go nowhere. Also would like to thank our sponsor who's weighing in, Hot Box Bistro's. If you haven't had the all new peach and cherry, peach cobbler and cherry egg roll, Leah.
Wait a minute, it's what?
Peach cobbler.
Oh yeah, we had some of them.
And cherry.
Yeah, I think, yeah, she gave us that the other day.
You know how you talk like that? Like that's how, you know, hey, do, hey, Leah, you see how you, you did that when something really good and it changed your, hot box, peach cobbler. Do it again, do it again. Cherry pie, the egg rolls, call it a day. Right now, place your order, four one nine, have lunch today at Hot Box, four one nine, six nine oh, forty-nine ninety. Again, that number's four one nine, six nine oh, four nine nine zero. Let your sweets today be a peach cobbler egg roll or a cherry filled egg roll. Mmm, I'm almost about to do the, girl, you know, boy, y'all don't go nowhere. It's the all new rising grind on this show.
It's just around the corner and once again, Ohioans have three good choices for how to vote. Polls will be open on November third and early in-person voting is available through November second. You can also request and cast an absentee ballot from the convenience of your own home. No matter which methods you choose, you can be confident that your vote is secure and your voice will be heard. Let's vote Ohio. Go to voteOhio.gov for voting locations and hours. Sponsored by Ohio Secretary of State Frank Barrows, aired by the OAB and this station.
If you're tired of church as usual and you're looking for something invigorating, exciting with passion, then the Greater New Psalmist Baptist Church, thirty-two fifty-one Glendale is the place for you. We are a people that's determined to occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change. The only thing's missing is you. Meet us at three two five one Glendale Avenue as we continue to be relevant and occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change. As we continue to be relevant and occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change.
That's right. It's the all new Rising Grind Morning Show presented to you by the four one nine grind podcast. It's your boy Big Trees and the lovely Leah Renee.
Hey, hey.
Again, want to thank all those grinders that's grinding with us this morning. We are the number one urban podcast show in the country. Want to just take a moment to say, uh, thanks to all those who early voted and have voted. We will continue to support and push that message on all platforms right here on the four one nine grind network. It is important that you get your vote out. Also Leah, make sure that they go over to Toledo City Paper.
Why you voting?
Why you voting and vote for us as best local podcast and banker, uh, best anchor duo. Right here on the all new Rising Grind Morning Show. But you know what Leah, I want to kind of get this thing started because it's some people who got birthdays today and you kind of mentioned them. Uh, I'm, I think we should do a little lunch treat. For those, if you're grinding this morning with us and you want to give birthday shouts out, anniversaries, or somebody that you missed, like I always, I think about my auntie, shouting out my auntie Janice, my grandmother Elaine Casey, my dad. Uh, rest in heaven. Uh, my uncle Vic. Um, and, and so just take a moment and we get a chance to share those names. And we get to celebrate those names right here on all new Rising Grind. So you could call in, call in, you can put it in the comment box. Who do you want to acknowledge today? Birthdays, anniversaries, uh, or any type of achievements or accomplishments? Celebrate with us right here on all new Rising Grind Magnificent Monday. And I, I like that you did that Leah. Kind of just gave them Libras. A little love, some Libra love right here on all new Rising Grind Morning Show.
Yeah. Uh, you know, speaking of, you just mentioned, you know, even if you, uh, maybe had lost some ones and you want to call and give some love. You know, I just want to send some special love out to my dad's whole side of the family. Um, we lost my aunt Rita over the weekend. She's the baby sister of my dad's side of the family and, um, she lost her son, my cousin Jay, years back while she was in prison and she just recently got out of prison a few years ago and, um, she was found unresponsive. Um, and she passed over the weekend and it's really sad, really tragic. So I just want to send prayers over everybody on, um, affected, you know, and on, on that side of my family.
Absolutely. So call in four one nine, five four oh, thirty five sixty six. Again, we're going to play that number so everybody can hear. We're going to play our engineers getting us keyed up.
Four one nine, what's on your mind? Give us a call at four one nine, five four oh, three five six six. We want to hear from you.
So if you get a moment, go through your Facebook, uh, whose birthday, you know, Facebook help us out to remember people's birthdays because you know, some of y'all be forgetting my birthday and stuff. So go to your Facebook page. Whose birthday is today? Also, you know, we ain't did too. I want to just wrap our, uh, rise and grind hugs around all of our students who's virtually learning.
Oh Lord. I'm not one of those students and Lord, let me tell you.
To our, to our kids, uh, just know that somebody is, uh, on the air talking about y'all and wanting y'all to, uh, try to stay focused. Try as much as you can. Even when you mess up, you're good. You're okay.
Overwhelm yourself. It'll be okay, you know?
If you don't get it today, you'll get it tomorrow.
And like Tree says, you know, us as parents, we have to try not to overwhelm them so much. It's okay. You know what I mean? Like even if they do get a bad grade every once in a while, it's not gonna, it's not the end of the world. You know what I mean? And, um, you know, my, uh, shout out to my Davis family. They put a lot of pressure on my daughter. They're very big on education, which is awesome, great, you know, and I am too, but they're even more so because they're old school, you know? And, um, I thank God for them because they balance me out, you know, I, you know me. So, uh, but you know, I try to kind of give a little bit of freedom to keep it balanced. Okay. You know, I don't want to put too much pressure on our kids. You know what I mean? You don't want them to be, you know, mind blown, you know? So we have to not overwhelm them so much too.
What's up, Dewan? Our intern, our engineer, uh, is weighing in. What's up Dee?
Um, like with all the, what, um, like I said, with all the pressure of online school and stuff, I was watching, uh, this other podcast. But basically what he said was people going to tell you like you can't do it and stuff, but keep striving. Cause he was saying like his dreams are going to the NBA. They had, they tell you only one and somehow people go like, no, don't think about that. Just keep pushing your dreams through no matter what you want to do.
Yeah, I agree, Dewan. It's so important that you said that. I love that you said that.
Uh, and I like what you said too, uh, Leah, as far as our parents, uh, I think our educators and our teaching professionals, y'all trying to get over all that god dang work ain't got to be done like that. Y'all don't even work that damn hard.
Yeah, it's a lot, like.
Don't be trying to work my son. Big shout out to my son Chase. He trying to get it done too. So, uh, if my son don't get in every assignment, like y'all gave him, he only ten in the fourth grade, fifth grade, excuse me. Slow down. Like Dewan had to tell me, uh, those that's weighing in, our interns say, hey, uh, since we're making constructive criticism, hey, Big Trees, can you slow down sometime?
Calm down.
Calm down a little bit. So again, to all those that's in this new season of virtual learning, we're teaching virtual learning. We're learning how to work through some of the technical difficulties. I understand. And some of here in our school district that we had a little bit of breach again with the, uh, with the system and it's a, it's a overload. Everybody's trying to work this new phase of learning and it's not easy. So give yourself a moment as Leah always say. Right here on the all new Rising Grind Show. Give yourself a moment. But again, I want you to call in. Who got a birthday today? I, I got, I got some cash apps. If it's your birthday.
Awesome.
Call in right now. Might put a little cash in your pockets for your birthday. Uh, if you know someone who was celebrating a birthday, tell them to call in. Again, if you know somebody in Libra celebrating a birthday, tell them to call in right this morning and they get a chance to get, get a little cash. Cause we're going to celebrate them on the all new Rising Grind Morning Show. But hey, uh, like we told you before, we got a great show lined up. And our guest is in the studio. So we're going to go to a quick break as our guest make his way in. Y'all don't want to miss this message because it's about to be real, real. Expect the unexpected on the all new Rising Grind Morning Show presented to you by the four one nine grind podcast network.
What's going on everybody? This is, uh, Lance Self is who I am.
And I am Arlinda Self.
And we are the selves and here to present our show called Self Esplanatory.
Yes, it's our podcast presented by four one nine grind.
That name just has a ring to it. Self Esplanatory. I feel like we about to be explaining what the shit. It's true. I feel like that's what it's about to be.
Well, I think we're going to talk about a couple of things. We're going to talk about marriage, of course. Um, we've been married, what, two years now, right?
Two years, been together for eight.
Right. Oh my goodness. It's a long time.
Y'all going to ask what took so long?
What did take, you know what? We'll get there.
Self Esplanatory.
We're going to talk about blended families, praying for your spouse, gender roles, living with family members, uh, cheating, raising kids, um, family upbringing, being there for your spouse, finances, uh, being a wife and a husband, trying to be together and be individuals at the same time, which is one of the one things, um.
Took a while.
It's taken a while, but it's the fun part. We're learning that.
That's what marriage is. It's a life journey. It's not an overnight thing. Yeah. Because you know, uh, I know there's a lot of days where I'm trying to be individual. I get on your nerves because of my individual ways. Uh, I can tell you one thing for damn sure though. Definitely get on my nerves. It'd be a lot. You definitely get some on my nerves, but I love her.
I get on your nerves?
Yes, it's possible. You do a lot. What's wrong? What's the problem?
What's the, what's wrong?
I am Lance Self.
And I am Arlinda Self.
And this is the Self Esplanatory Podcast presented by four one nine grind.
Listen on Apple Podcasts, iHeart Radio, Spotify, and wherever podcasts are heard.
It's Sandy Brown, owner of the Toledo Threat Basketball Organization. And I have some great news. The Toledo Threat are officially joining the four one nine grind podcast with our new show, Nothing But Net. On the show, you'll see athletes, coaches, and even community leaders who have nothing but net careers. Now, they may have hit a few bricks along the way, but with hard work and dedication, they're now seeing a consistent shot within their careers. You can catch us right here every Wednesday at seven o'clock starting September thirtieth on the four one nine grind podcast. Until then, nothing but net.
It's just around the corner and once again, Ohioans have three good choices for how to vote. Polls will be open on November third and early in-person voting is available through November second. You can also request and cast an absentee ballot from the convenience of your own home. No matter which methods you choose, you can be confident that your vote is secure and your voice will be heard. Let's vote Ohio. Go to voteOhio.gov for voting locations and hours. Sponsored by Ohio Secretary of State Frank Barrows aired by the OAB and this station.
Ladies and gentlemen, introducing Art Fisher. That's right. It's the all new Rising Grind Morning Show presented to you by the four one nine grind podcast network. We are in the studio. We have the luxury Leah to have Toledo's newest city council. Somebody that we know that many of us, it's straight energy and it's Monday. So Councilman Johnny Hobbs, we got it. Don't nobody want no boring show on Monday. Good morning, Councilman. Get, make some noise in the studio.
I like to call.
Good morning. And it's, it's unique because so many of us knowing in so many other capacities that he has served.
Yes.
Uh, but for the show purposes, we'll try to stay on point with Councilman Hobbs. But those that knowing that he loved, that we love, we got a, we got a special relationship. Like Leah, we can say we knowing.
Yes, absolutely.
So when you, when you found out Leah that we was having Councilman Hobbs, he actually called us and we were all on, and you was like, Pastor Hobbs?
Yeah. I kept hearing him say, uh, John Hobbs. I said, wait a minute, Pastor Hobbs? Yeah, I was, that was real. I was really happy to hear that it was you. I was like, wow, okay.
And he like, hey Leah, your families know. That's one thing about, that's another special thing about Toledo that we have. So Councilman Hobbs, thank you for coming to the all new Rising Grind Show. This is the number one urban podcast in the country. We're number one in Toledo and you gave us an opportunity to spend with you. Thank you. What's up babe? So, uh, and that's it. Pastor Hobbs, what was the vibe when you walked into the studio or you was walking in, we seeing people, seeing love, seeing heart, seeing the loves and we see them? Seeing the smiles and the likes. What was the vibe when you walked into the studio?
Listen Montree, it is a great opportunity to be amongst family. And that's what you're enjoying to come in and the family, the family vibe. And, and I love that because, um, that's the community I grew up in where everybody looked after everybody else. They looked after everybody else's kids.
Yeah, this about to be good, y'all.
It really was a village, right?
And so when we come in and I see all of these connections to the community from this young lady that I watched grow up playing basketball.
Little Justice JB, Dewan, our intern. Dewan.
Dewan looked at Justice like basketball.
It's just an opportunity to, to share again and then to know for, uh, as a community that we can have great relationships. We can build family. We don't have to pull each other down. Montree's giving me an opportunity to be on this show means we're climbing the ladder together.
Wow. And if y'all look at our heads, we gonna grow together, baby.
Yeah, y'all look like y'all been going to the same barber.
We gonna have barber talk too.
It's an opportunity. It's an opportunity.
So Councilman Hobbs.
And, and, and here's the number one thing. You got the dark skinned brothers in the house, babe.
We got the chocolate brothers with the beers.
Pastor Hobbs on that this morning, y'all. Preach. So Councilman Hobbs, Coach Hobbs, uh, Johnny Hobbs. I mean, you got all the names. But, uh, for those that do not know, because again, we are being heard across the world, definitely here in the four one nine. Where and who? Tell us a little bit about the family background and where you grew up and the siblings. Let us, let us in a little bit in the house a little bit.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a west sider baby.
Uh-oh, 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 west side.
West side?
I grew up on Elliott, which is between Auburn and Upton. Uh, my dad's barber shop is on the south side.
Absolutely.
I have a ton of connections from those two sides of Toledo. And then, uh, my parents grew up in a little township just before you get to Swanton called Spencer Sharpe.
Spencer Sharpe, yeah, because my uncle Woods. Uh, Mike Woods and the Woods, the Hoods. They actually, Willie, Willie and them, they did speak about. Mike Woods and the Woods, the hoods. They actually, Willie, Willie and them, they did speak about that. The, also the Coffees, the Deloney's. All y'all was out there in Spencer Sharpe.
So that's where my family is from. So I've got a lot of strong connections. But I grew up in, on Elliott, went to, graduated from St. Francis.
St. Francis, okay, the Knights in the building.
Awesome school.
Ohio State Barber College. I'm a third generation barber.
Wow.
Grandfather started as a barber. He was a sharecropper in Mississippi.
Okay.
And on the weekends, he would go into the barber shop and then my dad came here and my dad went to Andrews Barber College in Columbus. And my dad has been the owner of one of the leading barber shops in the state of Ohio.
Period, period. Hobbs, you know the name.
And my dad is a tremendous barber, tremendous mentor to me. And so.
Does he still cut?
Yeah, he still goes in.
That's why you ain't got no hair now cuz he was taking that line in too far.
He still goes in a couple of days, three days a week. And just, you know, appointment, he just, it's in his blood. He enjoys it.
He just enjoys it, yeah.
And so from there, when I graduated, my dad said, listen, son, go to barber college. Because that, number one, it give you a trade and then it'll give you an opportunity to always make money for yourself.
Yes.
And so he told, he's, you know, he said, I promise you that a lot of your friends will run into problems with money in college. You won't.
Right.
Because as a barber, you'll always, and there were two people during the depression that made money. The shoe repair man because people couldn't afford to buy shoes and the barber. Cuz they always wanted to have a good haircut in case they got called for a job.
Right.
That was even during the depression.
Wow.
Love history.
From there, started the University of Toledo.
Woo, rocket.
Four and a half years later, graduated from there with a bachelor's degree in public relations. Public relations, which is right down my alley cuz I'm a barber and a preacher, so I can talk.
Yes.
And the other thing was then I have a, a grant writing certificate from Owens Community College. So you can see I'm very rooted in, in Toledo. I believe in this community. I believe in the potential that we have. I believe in what we're doing and I think it's a great time. You know, people talk about 2020, can't wait till it's over and all that. I don't see it that way. I think 2020 has been one of the greatest years that we could ever have in our lives.
Except for loss of life in, in that respect.
Yeah.
But as far as opportunity, Councilman, Councilman, and I know Leah, she's, we, we all got questions that wanna speak with you. Go ahead, Leah.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, cuz he was speaking about his journey and you, you're right. I went to Tuskegee in one way. And I started off at Joliet in Chicago, but I learned how to cut hair and at the time it was only five dollars there. But I cut all the football players hair and I always had money.
Yeah.
So Councilman Hobbs, you are absolutely right. Learned, now I didn't do it the way that you would grab me, keep an eye on me too, expect it. But I knew how to fade a little bit. I was really good at my liners.
And it's a great opportunity. You know, God is just, God has just given us a great opportunity in 2020. With respective to people that have been affected by COVID.
Yeah.
But it's been an opportunity for us to, because there are businesses that are being opened and there's.
Oh, man.
There's the, the 419 Grind. People would never say, how can you make it in 2020 with everything that's going on? But what has happened is that Montree and Leah, you have seen an opportunity to be a voice of inspiration for people.
Absolutely.
And even in this time, we need somebody to come on and say, you can make it. You're, you're good. Hold on. Keep grinding. Keep getting up every day. No matter what you went through yesterday.
Absolutely.
And here's the thing, people think rise means stand up. That's not what rise means. I give you a little biblical. In the Greek, rise is not stand up. It means to get, go above your circumstance. So when I say rise, I'm not talking about standing up cuz there's a lot of people that stand up, but they're not above their circumstance. Rise means to go above your circumstance.
Okay, preach now.
Above your situation.
Unexpected.
And here we are. I love the name of that because rise gives us an opportunity that I've gotta go above, beyond whatever I'm dealing with. Whatever I'm going through. I ministered on this yesterday.
And they talked about that.
That's a word right there.
Pastor Hobbs, and now I can switch that cuz they talked about your message yesterday. We was gonna get into that.
That's a word right there.
Since you touching on it, it's that spiritual hangover on Monday.
I needed that word, Pastor Hobbs.
They were talking about your message on Sunday.
That's what we gotta do. We gotta, and, and so what this show does, it gives me a reason to get up every morning above my circumstance, above my situation.
Hit the heart button, hit the heart button.
Whatever I'm going through. And it helps me understand that, and, and then the grind part of it comes together. Because the Bible teaches us that faith without works is dead. So then the rise is the faith part. I gotta, but then the work is the grind. So then I've got to rise and grind or I've gotta have faith and works. So just to believe that something is gonna happen and not do anything about it is nothing. I've gotta believe it.
Always.
Then have an action that follows it. And so that's why I love this show because it is a faith, rise and grind means I gotta put something with my work. And that's all I know about Montree.
Pastor Hobbs, that was a whole word.
Thank you all.
That was a whole word.
Rising Grind Show, Morning Show, Toledo, Ohio, baby.
And Leah is so refreshing.
That was a whole word. I needed to get that.
And even when Pastor Hobbs, and y'all gonna have to work with us cuz this is the number one, we know him in a lot of positions. Not titles, but positions. He was talking to his mom on the phone and so not only do we love the show, he got mom weighing in. Mama, we wanna say thank you for soaring into our lives with your son today. Pastor Hobbs, do you, and cuz often here throughout the city, you have brothers as well?
Yeah, I have my.
Cuz they mention this a lot.
Yeah, one of my brothers was a sheriff. He's, he's deceased.
Okay.
He had, he passed several years ago. But then I have another brother that is also doing very well, working in the, in the barber industry. And so just, you know, thank God for that seed that my dad sowed into our lives.
Yes.
And so this is the, the, the growth of that seed, the maturity of that seed.
Yes.
And, you know, just thankful for an opportunity that Montree, Leah thought enough of me to say, we want him to come on. And to reach out to the world with the number one podcast show.
Urban, cuz this, we could control our own conversations. So when you come in and give us a word.
Yes.
And we thought it would go one way and you know, when the spirit take over, it go in the sun. We had a script and then God said, no, I wanted to go this way.
God said, I got something to say.
And one of our grinders, Imani Latif, he said, I love the Hobbs family's weighing in right now. Zara.
DJ Breezy, she said, he just confirms so much team. Yes, girl. Yes, girl. He is speaking to us.
And we thank you for that, Councilman Hobbs, Coach Hobbs. So just kinda, Leah, when we hear that and you hear his story, but he gave us a message in his story. And you know the family, he knows you. What does it say now when he even speaks about, he just spoke over our show, the Rising Grind? It, it even look different now when you say it.
It's, it's looks different. It sounds different. It just is different. You know, obviously shout out to our, our executive producer, Jesse Coleman. This is, this is his baby. You know, he put this together and brought together an amazing team, you know, cuz it's not just me and Trees. You know, it's such, it's everybody behind us, you know, so he brought that team together. But I'm quite sure when he named that show, he didn't have all that in mind. So that's just so dope to be able to hear that. You know, hear it like that, like that just, it just, I needed that message. You don't even know. And, you know, I think it's so important that the thing that I heard you say the most, and it's so crazy. Because all our guests talk about this in their own particular way, but the message is always still the same. You talked about how your father said, go get your barber's license first. Now, he didn't say, go become a barber, don't go to college. That's stupid. You know, you're gonna end up broke. He said, go get your barber's license first, you know. Get, have you a trade and have you a way to get some money, but you still went to college. You still went and experienced that. You, I mean, there's, there's no other type of networking like you do in college, you know, and so you still got to have that experience. And I just think it's so important because we need to teach our kids that you don't have to just pick one or the other. You know what I mean? Like you can do, you can do something that'll put you in a place where you can build a foundation for yourself and then you can go chase your dreams, you know?
Absolutely. Councilman Hobbs, so after going to college, you come back or you went to the university. What did your prefer, professional journey look like? How did that get underway?
When I graduated from college, the, I was, as my dad had said, was doing very well as a barber.
Okay.
And when I looked at what I would be making in public relations.
But wait a minute, wait, 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 hold up, pause, expect it. Councilman, when you said doing very well as a barber.
Yes.
What does that look like? Cuz we talking, cuz we're talking about a time now with virtual learning. We look at, we gotta see what people are saying. So at the time, when you were popping as a barber, what could a, let's just say a week's time, you could look at what type of money you were bringing? And it's cash, oh, and?
I'm just gonna say that barbering, barbering can be extremely lucrative if you are willing to put the work in.
Yes.
Say it Pastor, say it Pastor.
If you're willing to put the work in.
Absolutely.
I'll tell you a story. My first day in a barber shop, I'll tell you what, what type of dad I had.
Where were you at?
Hobbs Barber Shop. I'm at Hobbs, 636 North Detroit.
Yeah.
Okay.
My dad was a product of Mr. Clark.
Rest in heaven.
Clark, who, Mr. Clark is a great, great man. I stopped by and talked to him every time I get a chance. We just recently lost one of our great, great barbers, Mr. Old As Hairs.
Mr. Old As, yeah.
And we just lost him. But the first day I'm at the barber shop, I'll show you what type of person my dad is. So I asked him, hey, what time does the barber shop open tomorrow? He says, you know, eight o'clock. Okay. So I, I've graduated from barber school. I'm excited, my first day. And I show up at the barber shop at eight o'clock, get there, eight, his customers waiting. And I'm waiting and I start unpacking my kit and putting my clippers in the drawer and all that stuff. And so my boss, who happens to be my dad, says to me, what are you doing? And I said, I'm, I'm getting ready to, you know, go to work. And he said, no, you're not. And I said, I, I don't understand. He said, what time did the barber shop open? And I said, you told me eight o'clock. He said, so if you got here at eight and the shop open at eight, you late.
Oh.
He said, because you see all them people over there? They're expecting to be in the chair at eight o'clock getting a haircut. But they sitting here, gotta wait 10, 15 minutes for you to set up. He says, so what you should have done is you should have been here at 7:30, 7:45, set up so that when the shop open at eight.
You ready to go.
You ready to go. He says, so you go home and come back tomorrow. And man.
Changed your life.
You talking about like, and you know, of course, you know, I want a sidebar, side eye my dad, but my dad is, was a brute, 6'2". I mean, hands look like baseball mitts. Back is wide. Me, yo back and I put together. My dad, does anybody know my father's a big man, like didn't?
You ain't playing with Mr. Hobbs.
I was, all I could do was say, yes, sir. And I got my boys there waiting to get a haircut for the first time. And I had to come back tomorrow. But that next day, and from there on, I was always at work 15 to 30 minutes early.
Absolutely.
That taught me a lesson.
You gave yourself a little window when you said 15.
From there, I learned that to be on time is to be late.
So preparation is big.
That, man, it's, it's so, it's so, my father didn't believe in waiting on customers having to wait on you.
Right.
I know I'm about to get in trouble and, you know, gotta page you and beat you and see what time you gotta, my father didn't believe in.
He wasn't on that.
Be at the shop. The client is the most important person in the world.
Yes, absolutely.
They are the most important person. Get them in and out. My dad always said to me, what is the biggest complaint about barber and beauty? And I said, time. He said, exactly. People don't have all day to be sitting down here waiting for you to cut their hair. They gotta take their kids, they gotta do this, they gotta, all this other stuff. So you gotta get people in and out.
Absolutely.
Move them along. Now, the guys that want you to sit on their hair an hour, let them come on Monday and Tuesday. But Thursday, Friday and Saturday, you're busy. You gotta, you gotta roll.
Yeah.
And so I, I just, you know, thank God for that. And so from there, I worked with my dad several years. And then I expanded Hobbs Barber Shop and moved out to Central Avenue.
Yep.
Where Food Town is and that plaza there. And at that, at that particular time, I was the first barber shop to move out of kind of the inner city.
City, okay. You set the tone, trans-satter.
Out of the bubble.
Out of there. And so I was out in the area and because of what my dad taught me to do, my dad's policy was, is there's no such thing as a black barber. Or a white barber or a Hispanic barber. A barber is somebody that can cut everybody's hair.
Yes.
So if you can't cut everybody's hair, then you're limiting your money. And so my father made me practice in the neighborhood that his shop was in. It was in a strong Polish neighborhood. And then so they were still a lot of older white men that would come in and get their haircut.
Absolutely.
And so I learned how to cut straight hair. So when I moved out on Central, I cut Asian hair. I cut Lebanese hair. I cut Hispanic hair. I did all of it because I learned how to do it in the inner city on Detroit Avenue. Because my father did not allow me to be limited.
Yes.
And you know, like you said here about setting tone, that's what we did respectively. It wasn't no BET booty shaking going on. We learned, because we had single moms coming in there with little girls. You can't have the thong song going. I'm just, I'm just, you know, I know this is not for everybody. I understand. But we didn't, I didn't believe in that concept. We had a, a young lady that worked with us, Lori Kibler and Damon Young and Humphrey Oliver and Greg G. Nuts.
Yeah.
Greg Hannibal and Lamont Hobbs and Steve Parker and Mario Isom. I mean, we have some great, great barbers that, that came through that were very strong with their craft and what, and we set a tone for everybody to be comfortable in coming there. And so out in that community, especially not seeing, used to seeing African Americans. We had to handle ourselves a certain way.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so we, we, we didn't allow to hanging out and hanging at the barber shop and no, we didn't do any of that. And if, you know, that, that's just the way it was. You, you have to understand your surroundings and where you are.
Absolutely.
So, you know, just, just thankful for God continuing to open doors for me to serve. And that's, that's what I'm trying to do, Montree, sir.
But you know what, Councilman and Leah, what I like about life, and I'm, I appreciate my Tuskegee experience because we talk about this on the show. You can be comfortable. We don't have to take this podcast, the number one urban podcast to nobody else. And we got enough people in our, in our target population to work with, to grow with, to do it. I see Deion Thompson jujitsu. He said, he's like, you got my cat Hobbs on.
Listen, let me tell you, and Montree, please forgive me, if you all ever wanna talk to, Deion Thompson is one of the.
Jiu-jitsu.
Accomplished experience, watch this, hear this word, inspirational men that you'll ever meet.
Wow.
Like Deion Thompson is such a.
You gotta share this, Deion.
He is such a giant. This man was a very accomplished student. He was one of the greatest basketball players we had come out in the city of Toledo.
Absolutely.
A tremendous athlete, went off to college, came back to his community, is giving back like you wouldn't believe. Doing, and not only is he doing the jujitsu thing, but he is in charge of a huge part of BCSN. And when I wasn't coaching, he called me and said, hey, Hobbs, that, this is, I'm talking about a man who happens to be black, pulling another black man up. Got me on BCSN and joined that greatly. And then after that, Deion, not only that, but he, he is an, a successful father.
You can look in the camera and tell.
He took a son, a young black man, and this is one of the things Montree says, we get to talk that I'm gonna expand on in a minute. But he took a young black man and taught a boy how to be a man. And then his son went off and is, is successful and doing a great thing. So shout out to my brother, Deion Thompson. Man, he is, I have so much respect for this man. Look here. I, I am only worthy to sit at his feet, just like Socrates saw that sat at Plato's and, and learn from him. That's how I do Big D.
Leah, do you hear, and women and men, when we can acknowledge and it ain't about us and give homage to our team. Deion is on here saying, got you. Excellent. You got DJ Monty Press, Impresses on here. Leah, when you hear other men saying, I can stand alongside of another great man and we just as great. Women, I can stand alongside of my sisters and we can still be great. Do you know what that does?
Yes.
Do you know how you set a, set a mood on Monday, Leah?
Set a movement, you know, it's a movement. We have to, you know, be a village. We have to get back to the days that he was talking about when we were a village. You know, everybody was there to help one another out, you know, not tear each other down. And we've just gotten to this place where people are more comfortable with tearing each other down than lifting out a helping hand.
Well, it must stop here with that. So whatever they got going on Leah, as far as, cuz we gonna use that as strength. So if you getting tearing down and you don't like what Hobbs is saying, you don't like what Leah is saying, you don't like what, we go get somebody, go get what you want. You ain't gotta eat our food, but those that like eating our food, our kind of food, Councilman Hobbs, come on, eat with us.
Yes.
Cuz it's enough to go around. So you talked about, you went from the journey of being in the barber shop from family to being a barber. So then you get into, you mentioned a couple of different things. You talked about. So then you get into, you mentioned a couple different things. You talked about uh, being on BCSN. You went into coaching. How, and even now to your current position that you still serving, connected to, how did those doors walk in and kind of, if you could put them all together and create a good ingredient? Coaching, uh, uh color commentating and even your professional career as working with the state.
Um, Leah will tell you, she's been to the ministry many times.
Oh, many men.
And I, the ministry.
Montree, I'm a servant. That's what I am. I'm a servant. I serve. God has given me a servant's heart. And there's, every time he's opened a door up.
Man, he blew the roof off.
It's been a door to serve. And so when I graduated from college, my uncle, Uncle Lou Hobbs came to me and he was coaching at um St. Jude. He was coaching girls' basketball and girls' track. And he said, John, I want you to um, come and help me coach.
Where was St. Jude at?
St. Jude is out on Burn Road. Uh, it's um, it's on Burn. If you go outdoor, make a left on Burn.
Yes.
And Mount Vernon is sitting there. Well, St. Jude is behind Mount Vernon.
Yep, okay.
And so um, it's closed now, and I think it's a charter school. But he wanted me to come help him coach. And I told him, Montree, so Leah, I said, I don't have time to do that. And so he looked at me and he said, John, you don't, uh, you don't, uh, you can't not have time. He said, with everything that you blessed with, to graduate from St. Francis, to graduate from Ohio State Barber College, University of Toledo. He said, you have to give back. It, it, it's no way around that. And if you don't give back to kids that are less fortunate than you, then you're not doing what God called you to do. Because he didn't bless you to keep it to you, he blessed you to bless somebody else.
Okay.
And so, you know, once again, old school uncle, you know, you don't say no, uh, you know, next thing it'd be some left and rights going.
You gotta, you gotta understand me, he gotta understand me.
So I then uh began to work with him and then went to Burn Dale. And you know, was a program, they just didn't have five girls that could walk and chew gum at the same time. And we turned that program around. And then we went to Scott, a year as a JV coach under Coach Deborah Jones, uh, a woman that really, really cares about kids. She is the varsity assistant coach uh at Rogers Boys now.
Yes.
And uh, she really, really cares about kids.
She love her people.
Coach, Coach Dee Dee sold her car and bought a van just so she could transport girls back and forth from home to practice.
Coach Hobbs, and I wanna, and I want, because now you sit at the seat of power and we'll get into that. People like Coach Dee Dee.
Yes.
Leah, it's a lost art and I, Councilman, with every power that you have, from every way that you are, please speak and in those positions, in those rooms of a Coach Dee Dee, who make the sacrifices to make sure our kids, I done seen her, I done seen her go in her pocket to make sure it wasn't supposed to be the Ohio Association, the Athletic Association and do this and do that. But she don't, don't, the Ohio Athletic Association don't know this kid's background.
OSHA.
OSHA doesn't know the background of this kid. So with your leadership, and we'll get into that, please stand tall for those coaches as you were, that still know what it take to make sure that I got this kids. Uh, this kid is gonna be committed to what I say, so I gotta be committed to what he's, or she is going through.
And what, and what, you know, the problem we have honestly, and it's sad, is because all people care about is wins and losses. They determine whether you are a great coach or whether you're a good coach on how many games you win and lose. But for our kids, that's not a measurement of great coaching.
That's right.
We talking to somebody.
I mean, the beat, when, especially when you look at girl's sports, nobody cares about girl's sports. They don't care. And our young ladies, most of them, the highest level they gonna reach is college. And the, the thing about college is it's an opportunity for them. They've gotta be more set on getting a degree than going to the, you know, the WNBA. Thank God for that, but it could fold tomorrow, because it's not strongly supported. It's not. And so Coach Dee Dee um was a, is a tremendous servant. And she, like I said, sold her car, bought a van to transport kids back and.
Do y'all hear what he's saying? She did.
She, she would, she, we, we would get home from games and she's taking eight girls home, I'm taking four or five home. And it would be, you know, at two hours later, after we get back from an out of town game.
Still taking.
Coach Dee Dee would actually get home and get into bed.
Right.
And you don't hear people recognizing that and, and, and saying, oh, she was a good coach and this, that and the other. But that's, that's what it is about me. We're about, about changing these kids' lives. Anybody can pick up a basketball, anybody can, can, you, you can train an animal to put, shoot a ball through a hoop.
Right.
Uh, I don't mean any disrespect, but it's about character and it's about being good moral people. And Coach Dee Dee believed in that. And so.
Still do it, man, even outside of the court.
Oh, yeah.
She come up to City Park, sit on the end of the bench.
Yes.
And everybody knows Coach Dee Dee to the Toledo threat.
Yes.
And, and I'm gonna hold us accountable to giving that platform to our black coaches, female coaches.
She believes in kids.
Yeah.
I mean, she believes in young people. And uh, you know, you gotta know Coach Dee Dee, cause just cause she coaching boys, she don't take no stuff.
Period, poo.
Coach Dee Dee, and so went from there and was at Libby High School for years.
What? You had some cowboy in you?
Coach Libby, I told you.
You got some ass in you?
I told you.
You got the real ass?
Once again.
What year? Can you give us a timeframe?
We were there from uh, two thousand six to two thousand ten.
Okay.
I was the last coach, myself, Coach Matt Collins, Coach Sarah uh Arena, who is Collins now. We were there and once again, uh, my wife and I uh, for four years, we cooked every pregame meal. I mean, we, we didn't have anybody to sponsor us or, you know, have and, you know, a kid can't concentrate in school. They haven't eaten. A kid can't play a game and they haven't eaten since eleven thirty for lunch.
Who talking better than y'all listening?
And so we would, my wife and I, spaghetti or sloppy joe or something.
Man, putting a hearty meal.
You know, trying to make sure these, and this came out of our pocket, you know, and my wife, we, we, I would call her on the way home, make sure. And we would picking up uh, um, um juices, um, um, the sports drinks, um, I can't think of the name of, what's the sports?
Gatorade.
Gatorade, you know, we getting all that together, making sure these kids have. But God saw that we were serving. And so even though you'll never hear anybody say, John Hobbs done a great job as a coach or this, that and the other. The thing was, is I'm there to serve. It's not about my wins and loss record. It's not about, when you get a kid that didn't even think that they could go to college, when you get a kid.
Talk to the camera pastor, talk to the camera.
Didn't know what a ACT test was, or they're the first person in their family to even graduate from high school. These things, they didn't even think was a possibility. And so I drove in their brain, you've gotta go to college. You've gotta do this, you gotta do that. These are things that you're smart enough. You're, 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 uh, cause our young black females struggle so with self-esteem. Not thinking that they're pretty enough, not thinking that they're cute enough, not thinking that they're smart enough, not being loved. And, and, and so I don't wanna get ahead of myself. But you know, when, when I first started coaching at Libby, I would have young ladies come up to me and say, Co- Coach, what, what do you have a suit on for? And what, what is that all about? And I said, because I respect this, this is as professional as I can look. And I wanna give you my best. I want everybody to know, I'm giving my best in this. So you never gonna see me show up coaching a game in a, in a Nike suit. And I'm not knocking anybody that does, don't get me wrong. That's their style. That was just my style. That I'm gonna have a suit on that, I'm letting you know, that I'm here to, that's the examples our young ladies need to see, our young men need to see. Uh, I didn't allow cussing.
Coach Hobbs, I ain't even see you get mad and I done did a lot of games. I don't even see you get mad at the refs too often on calls, but that's a difference.
It was just, it was just an opportunity to teach our kids, because our kids need so much, there's just so much.
It is.
It can be overwhelming for what our kids need. And so uh, from there, um, being at Libby, we have some great young ladies there. In fact, one of my uh former uh, um, players, she just became uh, Sequoia Taylor. She's one of our newest police officers.
Yeah.
Um, and she is a graduate. She was my point guard. You know, had that, did that thing, that cowboy in her. You know, she calls and we have conversations all the time and she tell me, you know, Coach Hobbs, I thought you was crazy. I thought you was the meanest man I ever met, but I understood at the end what you were trying to get. And so this is a part of the reason I'm here today.
Wow.
So from Libby, um, Libby closed, went to start for a year. I had opportunity to go to the state final four with that team.
Wow.
Uh, I served under Coach Bob Brown. And then from there, I did a year at Central Catholic as the freshman coach. And then the door opened at Bowser High School.
And man, rocking rebels.
And then once again, we, we went there and most of Bowser became a lot of the Libby kids.
Here we go, here we go.
So here I am on familiar ground and dealing with a lot of those, those young ladies and those families and those kids. And running into dads who say, man, I'm glad you working with my daughter, cause your dad cut my hair when I was a little kid. That type of, of recourse is going, recoil, recourse is going on. So I'm extremely appreciative that God has constantly opened doors for me to serve. And that's all I know how to do is serve. I, I give kids, you know, give young people my best. And um, that, that's the, 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 the problem, one of the problems in, in Montree's, let me know when I'm talking too much. Leah, hit me on the leg and cut me off.
No, you did.
But one of the problems is, is that I hope to get accomplished and I can't do this by myself. But one of the things that really hurts me is that we've gotta find a way to get our black men to engage our community again.
Woo, well, don't go nowhere, I, I pastor, we gotta stay right there, cause that's some good stuff right there. Cause we gonna give people a chance to weigh in, but we gotta pay a couple bills, cause we. But I wanna say to you, thank you for sharing that message in a conversation.
Yes.
I saw Coach Wes over at Woodward do the same thing, coming from Libby.
Yes.
And I, and I, just a quick story, I, uh, Woodward's playing Rogers, the girls. At the time, they, they got uh, Hernika Glenn's daughter and all them, Rogers really good.
Yes.
And um, the, the young lady that played with Zaya Cook was a freshman, T Asia.
Yes.
She was a freshman over at Woodward.
Yes.
And they were going there cussing and fussing and Rogers coming in there very stoop. And they're acting like they, you know, like they're in control and they're very mannerable. And the Woodward girls were a little rough and they was getting loud and throwing their uniform. And I was, and I was looking at Coach Wes as I, I'm being the announcer. I'm like, man, why is Coach Wes letting these girls get away with this? What, man? So later on that year, I seen him, he was coaching tennis. And I asked him about that. And I said, Coach Wes, to your point, uh, Coach Hobbs, now we can give you Coach Hobbs. I said, Coach, why did you allow the girls to have kind of a more of a, they can, they can show their attitudes and get a little uh, what we don't see in sports, you don't act like that. Why you let them act like that? And he said something, just what you just said about our black men. He said, Montree, if I cut these girls on this team, where else is they going to on that north side of Toledo? What am I, what are they opening the doors to? He said, I gotta get, I gotta take a little more than what you might see in Rogers. Not knocking the way that it was, but I understood what Coach Wes was saying. When they see your leadership and you talk about what you had to deal with, y'all looking at wins and losses. I'm looking at lives and life and death.
Yes.
Don't go nowhere. This is all new Rising Grind Morning Show. More and more with Councilman Toledo Zone, Johnny John Pastor, Coach Hobbs.
What's up, baby?
We gotta record.
It's just around the corner. And once again, Ohioans have three good choices for how to vote. Polls will be open on November third and early in-person voting is available through November second. You can also request and cast an absentee ballot from the convenience of your own home. No matter which methods you choose, you can be confident that your vote is secure and your voice will be heard. Let's vote Ohio. Go to voteohio.gov for voting locations and hours. Sponsored by Ohio Secretary of State Frank Barrows, aired by the OAB and this station. Sponsored by Ohio Secretary of State Frank Barrows, aired by the O A B and this station.
I dreamt about you both day and night. Can't stop thinking about what we can hide.
That's right. It's the all new Rising Grind Morning Show presented to you by the four one nine. Network. This is the number one urban podcast in the country right now. And we're right here based out of Toledo, Ohio, and we've had the honor and the privilege to have a great show this morning. In the studio, we have Toledo's newest city councilman. And listen, y'all, some people say titles. Councilman Hobbs played a lot of positions as a minister, a coach, a barber, all in one. And we are having just some really good conversation about his journey and who he is. And before we got off air, he made a very powerful statement about we have to get our black men back involved in building the community. So as we talk about the journey of being a coach, being in ministry, and then the power of men getting back involved, because now councilman, you sit at the seat with three new councilwomen never done before. And we need the men to make sure that we're supporting them in that role and knowing that they can lead. So why is that so important, Councilman Hobbs, that the men understand their role in coming back? Because they'll try to come back over and not pay attention to the environment. Why is it so wrong that you know your position and know your role?
The the thing we have to understand, when you look at communities are strong and they are are effective, let's be honest. The Lebanese community or Middle Eastern community is very strong because they have strong men. The Jewish community is strong because they have strong men. Caucasian is community is strong because they have strong men. The the uh even the Hispanic community that may not some, you know, we're we're looking at a lot of them that are coming. Uh or however they hear they're doing um things that maybe we, you know, some people say, I would never do that job. But once again, they have strong men that are right down there grinding. And one of the things that we are missing in in the community uh is strong men that are willing to work with our young people. Now, I know I'm getting ready to get in a lot of trouble for this.
Here we go. Expect the unexpected.
I will tell y'all, this did not come from Montrez and this didn't come from Leah.
They probably do.
But the problem is, is that our black women have been given an impossible mission. God never intended for a woman to teach a boy how to be a man. She can't do it. And 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 here I come. I have a daughter. And my daughter could not be taught how to be a woman from me cuz I'm not a woman. I I'm never gonna deal with the physical issues women deal with. A man is never going to romantically break my heart. Uh all of those things that women deal with, it took my wife, a strong woman, to teach her how to be a woman. I can teach her how men view women, but to actually be a woman, it took my wife to teach her. My mom, uh my wife's mother, it took those women to teach her how to be a woman. I can't teach her that. And so our young men are being left to learn how to be men. I know it just got real quiet out there right now.
He got crickets.
But a woman cannot teach a boy to be a man. And it's not her fault. We have to step up. I don't care if you and your baby mama don't get along. You still have a son that needs to be taught how to be a man by you. And that can't come from his mom because there are things that he's never going to address or deal with that it needs to come from another man. A woman cannot. Okay, iron sharpens iron. And so we have to understand that it takes men. When I was, when I was growing up, there were men all around me shaping me. Coach Snotgrass, Coach Reeves, uh uh Mr. Ellis, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Batson, Mr. Johnson.
Coach Black.
Co- Coach Black. I mean, there were so many men in my neighborhood, Lon Woodard, police officer. There were so many, so many strong men that helped shape me to be who I am today. And until we get our men, I'm making a call, man. Until we get our men to engage our community again as they once did. It's not enough. Ian English, Judge Ian English, he can't do this by himself. Judge Myron Doohard, he can't do this by himself. Councilman John Hobbs, he can't do this by himself. It takes it and I'm not saying we're the only ones, but it takes it takes the barber. It used to be a time when a father, I can tell y'all this from experience. It used to be that a father bought his son to the barber shop. The barber shop was a rite of passage for us. Now, boys are brought to the barber shop by their mothers. You hardly get men bringing their sons in the barber shop anymore. And so the engagement that that young man needs, because here's what's gonna happen. He's gonna gravitate to a man one way or another. And so whether that be the positive man in his neighborhood and community or whether it's the gangbanger, he's going to gravitate towards a man in one way or another. So we have to, again, I'm gonna say this again. We have to, as men, as black men, engage. We have got to go back to taking care of our woman, to go back to taking care of our wife. Listen, let me tell you something. The first time you're a girl has her first slow dance. It should be her and her dad. Her first time being taken out to dinner.
Door open.
The door opened by her for her.
Chair pulled out.
Chair pulled out. That should all come from her dad. The first date she goes on, that should come from her dad.
Wait, 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 Coach, Coach Hobbs, what if that isn't present but a strong male?
Grandfather, uncle, someone. But we, and that's the community I grew up in, that if if they saw me doing something wrong, they would pull me to the side. If they saw me around, even and and I don't mean this in a disrespectful way. Even the the wino on the corner, well, cuz I used to walk from Elliott, my brothers and I down Clinton.
Yeah.
We made a left on 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 Oakwood.
Yes, sir.
Walked over the railroad tracks, made a right on Sme and walked to St. Teresa's every day. And at that time, that that neighborhood was a very, you know, Oakwood used to have another name at that time.
Well, you could say it on here cuz.
Oakwood used to be called Coke Wood.
For sure.
And it was, it was a, but you know what?
They took care of it.
Even those guys, when we were walking, they would say, hey, hey, come here, come here. I I I don't, don't do that or don't be around that.
Yes, sir.
Or e- even though they were drinking or even though they were getting high. My parents did not allow us to disrespect anyone. And those men would share information. They would even tell you, son, I know I look bad or I don't smell good or this, that and the other. Don't be like me.
Yes.
Go here, do this, that. All of those things, those men, even though they were at a place where we we considered them the lows of society, they still had a message. They still cared enough about you to say, don't be like me. But now, where do our young men turn to to be engaged by men?
So.
Where do our young ladies turn to to be engaged by men? And until we as men, I'm putting it on us, we have to pick up the mantle again. And we have to care about our young men and our young women again. We have to go back to, nobody has the time. It is a thankless job. But we have to go back to being coaches again. We have to go back to showing our young men how to cut the grass and shovel the snow. I I sometimes in my neighborhood, the the it snows. And I'm looking at single moms outside shoveling snow when their fifteen, sixteen, seventeen year old son is sitting in the house on 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 Playstation five or seventeen or whatever it is. That that's ridiculous. My my dad would have thrown us out the window. If he had come home and seen my mom shoveling some snow and three of us sitting in the house. We have to go back and and I know it's not a popular message. I I know it's.
Expect the unexpected, but it's.
We have to go back to truth and we have to teach our young men how to engage. Because right now, all we're teaching our boys to do is to go from one set of nipples to another.
Oh, okay, alright. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanna say, um, well, first of all, shout out to Councilwoman Sandra McPherson. She says, but a man can't teach what he does not know. So what do you say? I mean, what do you say to that? Like?
And Councilman McPherson is right. And that is exactly my point. We have lost a generation. We have lost a group that knew how to engage. I'll give you a prime example. When when my children heard Councilman McPherson was on, they were excited. Because at one time, they were at McKinley where she's a teacher.
Yeah.
And Councilman McPherson engaged my children every day in school. And they remember the impact that she had on their lives, which helped shape them to be good young people. Not perfect, but good.
Yes, yes.
And so I'm saying, as she is right, and that they can't teach what they don't know. And so we've got to find a way. I don't know what the answer is. It takes.
Consistency.
It takes different people with different approaches and different ideas. But we've got to do more to celebrate a Coach Wes. We gotta do more to celebrate a Coach Lamar Smith. We gotta do more to celebrate these men that are impacting the lives of our young people. We we gotta try our best to go back to engaging and and arm in arm. When 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 the teacher calls you about your kid acting up in school, we we can't have teachers scared to call you cuz you coming in and cussing them out.
Right.
We gotta listen to the teacher and see if they're saying something that is truthful and then engage our child and say that's not appropriate behavior. So to Councilman uh McPherson's question and answer, everybody doesn't know it, but we have to find a way to reach out to those, even when they don't seem like they wanna hear you. Leah and her family lived across the street from me for many years. They will tell you, when I get home, my young men that are standing on my street, I don't look at them and say, hmm, and I ain't going there. Lot of times in that group, I walk down to them. Hey, how you doing? Her her niece is sitting here. She's my witness. I engage those young men and they just give me a hot head nod or whatever. No problem. I'm engaging them. I'm trying to show them. I'm trying to be an example. I'm trying to reach out to them because like Council McPherson said, they don't know how to give a strong right hand shake. They don't know to look another man directly in the eye. And unless we teach them that.
Yeah.
They don't know when they're standing around our females, not to be saying B and H and MF and they don't know those things. And so it takes us to get out of our comfort zones and not be afraid of our young people, but to engage them. I I'm be giving a signal. I'm talking too much.
That that signal is that he is very engaged in what you're saying and he probably wants to chime in. And of course, with him being one of our young men, we definitely wanna hear what he has to say. What's up, Dewan?
Um, so you talk about how to reach out to the to the kids and stuff. So like, you ever thought about like, like summer camps, but like, like play the game with them and stuff, like stuff that the kids do? Have Madden tournaments, but like you still teaching them at the same time?
Yes, sir. And 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 here's here's my thing, Dewan. That's what I'm talking about.
Meeting them where they're at.
Engaging the young people and seeing what they wanna hear.
Absolutely.
What they like. And then me, don't not stuck in, it's gotta be done this way and if it ain't done that way, it won't work. Let's find a happy medium.
Yes.
And if I can teach you, because right now, uh one of the greatest things you can teach our young people to do is to play Madden and to play of uh uh PlayStation and all those things. I I I'm not sure of all cuz I'm not a gamer. But what they're finding out is that young people that spend seven to eight hours playing the games are becoming excellent surgeons because of the hand eye coordination. They're encouraging to do this because they're doing very well becoming surgeons.
But they also, Councilman, are becoming coaches because my son loves to teach me how to play the game.
Yes.
And also.
Speaking and learning how to speak to show me, cuz I don't understand what you mean, son. Well, Dad, you gotta do it like this. So now he's, so now, and young ladies. They, especially with the makeup, they wanna show you why they doing it. So we are seeing those other uh life skills being being formed.
And and what kids don't understand is the gaming industry has skyrocketed. You know what I mean? So kids, can you can make a career out of this if you love it that much, if that is your passion, you know? But you have to do the work too. Like, it's not all, you know, it's not gonna be all funds and games, you know, fun and games. But it is a very lucrative career if you work hard, you know?
Let me, let me, and let me go back. Women, please hear me. Please hear everything I say.
We don't do snippets. They can play this all the way back.
Great job. They're doing a great job, but we need our men to engage. Let me give you an example, and I wanna go back to Dewan. Let me give you an example. When I was growing up, I'd be down at the base of my my brothers and I playing Atari. Y'all don't know what that is.
I remember Atari.
And my mom call call one of us, we keep playing. My dad, my mom calling us, we keep playing. Finally, that third or fourth time, yes, ma'am, we get up and see what she want. My dad could have whispered my name. Y'all, y'all not hearing me. And I would have run through a brick wall getting there to see, because there is a difference.
Oh, yeah.
That a young man has in respect as it relates to his father and his. So let me get back to 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 Dewan. So Dewan, I'm extremely interested. And how do we, cuz what we don't have now, Dewan, we used to be able to go to the Catholic club and hang out all day. We used to be able to go to the boys' club. Some of y'all remember this. I i- if you wanted to get good at basketball, you had to go to Ottawa Park and sit there all day with your winners. And and the old school cats would be like, no, I got your winners, young man. And some point, you had to stick your chest out and scared to death and say, no, I'm holding on to my winners, you know? And and you had to go to Smith Park. You had to stay at City Park.
You could play with me though.
But that's right. But you had to earn, you had to gain that respect. And so I want to, and those old cats, the the one that had on the raggedy's pair, I know raggedy's is not a word, but the raggedy's pair of Chuck Taylors, and you be looking at this cat like, man, he, but he was the baller, like. Those to engage and and they passed along knowledge to you. Now, we don't have those venues to where our old school brothers get to pass on that knowledge to the young school brothers, to the brothers that's coming up. Because you you not tomorrow, Dewan. You're today. You're right now. We need you right now.
That's right.
So we have to find a way. I'm willing to, and I'm willing to ask others to help me. How do we engage our young men so we can teach them? And that way, when they're confronted with certain situations, dealing with people at work or dealing with the police or dealing with the fire or dealing with whoever, we can teach them how to engage.
Yes.
Even when it may not be a comfortable engagement.
That's where I was about to go, Councilman. This thing ain't comfortable. You talking to the man, I do it. Ain't nobody else in Toledo, Ohio do it like Montrez Terry. And I say it boldly. Cuz can't none of these Negroes come in front of City Park with no policing and hold down a citywide. So what do, but what do I have to learn?
Yes, sir.
What are, what are, what I had to learn was, it wasn't what I wanted to do. Is finding out what they will allow me to help them do. So we can bring thousands of people up to City Park with no police.
No police.
But we have our incidents.
Yes.
We haven't had one where we couldn't come back from.
Yes.
But we stay consistent, what you saying, when it's not comfortable. So now, Councilman Hobbs, social distancing. Don't get close to them. Wear your mask. Now, now them same young brothers that was already lost, they not coming back. I just did a funeral. Uh Friday, Mount Pilgrim, Dr. Pastor uh had a young, lost a young brother. One of the, when they gave the two minute remarks.
Pastor Bishop.
Pastor Pastor Bishop is now being noted as being the church open to the streets, right? And that's just kinda what the name that he's getting with Mount Pilgrim. Uh but what took place was, we gave the two minute remark because most of the generation of of this particular situation had not had a relationship with the church. We give the two minute remark, we give them the microphone, they get up there and the gentleman who passed had a branded company called Boy Fuck You and a Girl Fuck You. That's what's his branding on his clothing. But they got up in the pool pit and spoke like that. And and Bishop had to come up behind one of them and tell them, hey, we're not gonna be cussing in the church. So it's not getting mad, we like, Councilwoman said, who is teaching? Who is putting in the time? And Councilman Hobbs, you are so right. This will cost you something if you get out here in these streets and get in these trenches. They said, what, they meeting at Swain Field. Let's go reach him at Swain Field. It's not gonna look like what city officials sitting up in the seat. So you sitting at the table now. Councilwoman McPherson, Tiffany Vanis, y'all are sitting at the seat
Yes.
to say just what Dewan is saying. What the hell do they got to do, Councilwoman, uh Councilwoman, Councilman? What do we offer somebody who graduated? Thank God that our young lady Sequoia, you just mentioned her. What do we offer a person eighteen to thirty-six in a social setting?
Yes.
Councilman Hobbs, what do we offer them here in Toledo? What do we have offer?
And what we have to offer is, we have to find what's so key is Dewan here.
And JB.
He's got some young men that are in his age bracket.
Yes, sir.
That he's gotta say, hey, y'all, let's come and talk to the old bald head, big head, dark skinned dude.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
I don't think I'm old, but to them, you know, I'm ancient. So.
Yes, sir.
Bring them and be willing to sit down and say, hey, if it's two of them, the way social media and everything is now, two of them can spread the word like you wouldn't believe.
Right.
And I see you got some people looking in.
We gotta help to understand.
Oh, yeah, it's live jumping.
We gotta help them understand that we like what you're doing. Let's fine tune it. Cuz every generation is gonna do something a little different, so let's fine tune it. Let's fine tune it. And so when we fine tune that.
Yep.
We 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 gotta help our young men understand. Watch this. We gotta help our young men to understand. You can disagree with me. Agree, disagree, or agree to disagree, but we don't have to blow each other's brains.
Yeah.
We don't have to. We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to shoot and kill each other and have drive-bys because we don't. And and it's up to us, for all of us that are doing something. Uh uh I can't even imagine how many free lessons Deion Thompson has given away at his jujitsu school.
And you know.
To engage. Can't can't even imagine that.
Fraud.
You know how many people.
Oh, T. Fryson, what's up, baby?
You know how many people I hear say who are our age, you know, when I say our age, like, you know, me and Treese were in our, well, I'm in my late thirties, you know, he's in his early forties, but I've seen and heard people our age, you know, who have a platform, who can be doing something, say stuff like, um, you know, uh, the, these kids are crazy or these kids are out of control or whatever, but nobody wants to, you know, and you do, instead of being, you know, these kids are out of control, these kids are out of control, we have to figure out a way to reach them, like you said, where they are at. But we have to stop trying to be in competition with these kids. It's too many of forty year olds, you know what I mean? Your time, it, it's not that it's come and gone, but you know what I mean? Like, know your place, you know what I'm saying?
The Bible says this, I call the young because they're strong. I call the old because they know the way.
Yes.
So, you know, when I get up in the morning, uh, the first thing I do is I sit down, thank the Lord, this, that and the other. I say my prayer, thank you God for another day, pray over family and friends. But then I get on that floor. And I'm up to seventy-two straight pushups, seventy-two straight.
I can get seven and then two.
That young man can crank this boom, 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 just, just go. Nah, I mean, no, it ain't no. So what I gotta do, I'm never going to be able to do at fifty-one, I'm just not going to be able to do a hundred and fifty to two hundred straight pushups. I'm just not. What I gotta do is learn how to break it up to still get what he's getting in and not criticize him or be mad or jealous.
Exactly.
Or upset because he can. But how can I fine tune it?
Yes.
To help him be in a better place when he's fifty-one than I was at fifty-one.
So, Councilman?
And it, once again, it takes Sandra McPherson. Like Sandra McPherson is a great woman, has impacted children.
That's my whole life.
Tiffany Preston Whitman, who is impacting young people at the University of Toledo. And her dad is a form, was, was a former police officer. Van Nis Williams, who is, 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 is a, was a, a former principal. And now has taken that and opened her own daycare where she's engaging. We're now on the platform, not to say, look at me, I'm here now. No, we now, it is up on us to engage the community at a greater level.
I'm glad you said that. I'm glad you said that. Because, Councilman, and I was going to go to break, but since we ride, we gonna ride this thing, we ride with you today. Councilman, what can we expect in your leadership role as city council? Not, and what are some of the things that you have learned as a challenge that you're going to have to make some adjustments? So what have you learned in this short time of adjusting? And what can we expect as you being now a councilman over District Three and you can kind of let them know? District one.
One, baby.
Okay, District one, baby.
D one.
Number one. Okay, don't, don't just talk it, you gotta walk it. Now, what does that look like?
And so what it looks like for us, I can tell you that you have four people on now. Watch this, this is why it's so important, that don't have a political.
Take notes, get your pen and paper.
A political agenda. McPherson, Whitman, Williams, Hobbs, we don't have a political agenda. We're, we're there to serve the community. We're there to serve the community and we understand some of the issues that the community has. And so as, as, watch this, we're holding each other accountable.
Yes.
Because Sandra McPherson already came on and said, Hobbs, you saying a good thing, but what about? She's holding me accountable to make sure I'm not just talking, but I'm gonna walk what I'm talking.
And you know what? One thing is that it's been universal with all of you that we have sat down with is that the one thing I've heard every single one of you say, I didn't choose this. I'm in this because God told me this is where you need to be. I need you to serve here. I, I'm here to be a servant. Every single one of them, have you, did you pay attention to that? Every single one of them, every single one of you have said that.
And then they had to come on here and say the right thing anyway, because they got two people that's gonna hold them accountable, Leah.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. But, but you can hear the sincerity.
Absolutely.
You could hear the sincerity in each, in each one of your guys' voices when you said that. I'm not in this for notoriety. I'm in this because God called me to serve and I'm here to serve the people and I love that.
And I promise you that, listen, hear this, everybody in District One, I'm learning. This is new. I'm learning. So I may not get to things as fast as you want me to.
Yes.
But you gotta understand, you gotta give me a chance. You have to give Sandra McPherson, you have to give, uh, Dr. Whitman. You have to give Van Nis Williams a chance to learn this so we can better serve you. But I promise you, as we come into the knowledge of how to serve you, we're going to be better. And we're going to help get some things accomplished along with our other city council members. We're going to get some things accomplished. I can promise you that you have four people that are committed to this community in a way like you've never seen before.
So to that point, uh, Councilman Hobbs, people will say, well, they don't know the game. Y'all don't know how, y'all, they gonna get some things, some things are going to cross y'all agenda that y'all ain't gonna even pay attention to. What do you say to that?
And I, guess what? And like I said, I'm learning. Here's the thing about me, here's the thing about Sandra McPherson, Dr. Whitman and Van Nis Williams. If something gets by us, we are man or woman enough to say, my bad, I missed it, but it won't happen again.
That's right.
Because there's a commitment there. I'm telling you that the four people, thank God for the honorable Jack Puffin Burger. Your honor, Jack, who, who chose us.
When you got the car, you got a C, we got good.
I want to say that he chose four people that had no political background at all.
Yeah.
This process took a lot longer than it was supposed to.
Absolutely.
Because he wanted to choose four people that had a heart to serve.
Yes.
And so you're looking at four people that are extremely intelligent, that are wise, that are smart and that have a heart to serve. And so we're gonna bring these issues, I promise you all, we're gonna work on these issues. There are issues, we're getting emails and phone calls about things every day, but if you give us a chance, it's not gonna happen overnight. I know it's something we say wrong wasn't built in a day, but it's not something that's gonna hap-. But believe me, you have four people that are committed to the cause, that are willing to come in and put our, hey, we're in it, we're in the trenches.
Absolutely.
And we're, we're here now, let's go. And then we gotta have Montree's and we gotta have Leah. And we gotta have Dewan continue to say, hey, we need you to come on here and keep the community informed. Keep America informed about what's happening in Toledo, Ohio.
And if you want to call in, please call in right now. Ask Councilman Hobbs, we're gonna play the number for you.
Four one nine, what's on your mind? Give us a call at four one nine, five four oh, three five six six. We want to hear from you.
Call in right now, ask Councilman your question. You got Kelly Balkam on here, you got Amy Nicole Meredith, the Meredith name may ring to you. Uh, again, Stevie Steve Harris over there at, uh, local, over there with Fleetwood and them, I don't want to say the different local, uh, union that he's with, but you got people wearing that, Councilman, we, we take.
Something I want to speak to, Montree's, please forgive me.
No, no, you're okay.
On my mind. The two places, two of the places that community information has always gone through, especially in the black community, and this is every community, but especially in the black community, has been the church barber shop slash beauty shop. So we've got to get back to the church barber shop slash beauty shop being focal points of information in our community. Because when black women or Hispanic women or Asian women or, uh, Jewish women or Middle Eastern women get together in those settings, when the men get together in those settings, it's a source of information. Because barbering never used to be about who done the best lineup. And it wasn't about the fade, it was about the connection to the community.
Absolutely.
Barber had, and, and one of the things I want our young barbers to understand is that it's enough hair out here for everybody to cut.
Even our beards.
But the engagement and the information that comes through the beauty shop or the cosmetology shop, the barber shop and the church, we've got to get back to somehow getting those entities to engage our communities again.
One by one.
Sunday morning, it used to be people were going to the Kingdom Hall, they were going to the mosque, they were going to the temple, or they were going to church somewhere. Every Saturday, every other Saturday, that man was going to the barber shop with his son him. And there was great conversation, even after you got your haircut, you sat around and argued for hours. Michael Jordan the greatest, no, uh, uh, Kareem is, no.
I mean, they made a whole movie out of it, right? The barber shop and then three different, uh.
We gotta go back to that engagement.
Yeah.
And that connection again for our, for our continued survival, okay?
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes, sir.
So you think like more churches should start live streaming their churches then?
Yes, sir. I, um, I do live stream because here's the thing, this is what I'm talking about, Dewan. Everybody is, is not going to come to the actual building.
Right.
That's no problem. I don't have a problem with that. If I can engage you, if you, if you will turn yo', uh, Dewan, your live stream on or Facebook or whatever it is and listen to me for twenty minutes, I'm so excited. If you give me a like, I'm so excited. That's what we gotta do. We gotta find different ways to engage people. Young, e- especially our young people, they're so into social media, we gotta do Facebook, we gotta do YouTube. We gotta get out of stuck, everybody's not gonna do eleven o'clock.
Absolutely.
Let me get out, let me get out of your way. Dewan, I'll come back after the commercial break.
Yeah, uh, we're gonna take a quick break and we, we're gonna wrap up. We got a few more things that we want to discuss and we want to hear, uh, co- Councilman Hobbs say his appreciation and his love. So don't go nowhere, it's all new Rise and Grind Morning Show, we'll be right back.
What's going on, everybody? This is, uh, Lance Self is who I am.
And I am Arlinda Self.
And we are the selves and here to present our show called Self-Explanatory.
Yes, it's our podcast presented by four one nine grind.
That name just has a ring to it, self-explanatory. I feel like we about to be explaining what the shit. This is true. I feel like that's what it's about to be.
Well, I think we're gonna talk about a couple of things. We're gonna talk about marriage, of course.
Okay.
Um, we've been married, what, two years now, right?
Two years, been together for eight.
Right. Oh, my goodness, it's a long time.
Y'all gonna ask what took so long.
What did take, you know, we'll get there.
Self-explanatory.
We're gonna talk about blended families.
Yeah.
Praying for your spouse, gender roles, living with family members. Uh, cheating.
Uh huh.
Raising kids. Um, family upbringing, being there for your spouse, finances. Uh, being a wife and a husband, trying to be together and be individuals at the same time, which is one of the one things, um.
Took a while.
It's taken a while, but it's the fun part, we're learning that.
That's what marriage is.
It's a process.
It's a life journey. It's not an overnight thing. Yeah, because you know, uh, I know there's a lot of days where I'm trying to be individual. I get on your nerves because of my individual ways. Uh, I can tell you one thing for damn sure though. Definitely get on my nerves. It'd be a lot. She definitely gets on my nerves, but I love her.
I get on your nerves?
Yes, it's possible. You do a lot. What's wrong? What's the problem? It's the, what's wrong? I am Lance Self.
And I am Arlinda Self.
And this is the Self-Explanatory Podcast presented by four one nine grind.
Listen on Apple Podcasts, iHeartRadio, Spotify and wherever podcasts are heard.
If you're tired of church as usual and you're looking for something invigorating, exciting with passion, then the Greater New Psalmist Baptist Church, thirty-two fifty-one Glendale is the place for you. We are a people that's determined to occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change. The only thing's missing is you. Meet us at three two five one Glendale Avenue as we continue to be relevant and occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change.
That's right, it's the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show presented to you by the four one nine grind podcast network. Right here, we done had a beautiful Monday, I'm talking about a message ministry Monday, right here with Toledo's newest city council. And no, uh, stranger to the four one nine, no parts of the four one nine. Councilman Johnny Hobbs, Councilman, how you feeling this morning? Again, you got people on your line, man, you got, yo, yo.
I told you, his line was jumping, his line is jumping.
And, and so on our show, we like to engage and interact with those.
What's up, Bianca?
There you go. That's what this is. Who would you like to say some morning love as they rise this morning? Who would you like to appreciate from family, friends and any other journey that you would like?
Tyrone Fryson, uh, the Frog himself over at, uh.
H and D's.
H and D's, the man, a great, strong man, uh, just so many of the barbers out there, shop owners that are doing such a great job in the community, so many of the, of the pastors, uh, male and female that are doing such a great job in the community. Um, I'm extremely thankful to everyone, y'all forgive me. Coach Tyrone Edwards. Y'all, please forgive me, this is my first time doing a live. And, uh, I just do Facebook to keep up with what's going on in the community with everybody else. So Leah is teaching me something new, so for all my mistakes, y'all, please forgive me.
And blame mommy.
I, I will be better, but, uh, I'm just thankful for.
Family and friends.
My, 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 my family and just so thankful for, uh, people that are friends and have engaged me. And even through my shortcomings and, 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 uh, uh, times that uh, I may not have been the best that I can be, they love me anyway. And so I'm thankful for those that support this great city, that support the Rise and Grind Morning Show, that support.
Yes, thank you.
Facebook page, um, that support, uh, shout out to Bishop Randall Parker, my, my dude. Uh, Pastor Perry over, uh, at, uh, um, United Vision, just great.
Southview graduate, Southview in the building, we represent Savannah, Southview.
Yes, so just thankful and, uh, we can continue to allow this to grow. Um, all of the coaches that are coaching our kids, our young people, thank you to you for, for, for sacrifice. Cause when you coach, I, you know, Montree's, uh, it would be so nice if we could just coach and go home. But we gotta pick all the kids up.
And the family component, coach.
Take them to Speedway.
And gotta go take them home to the families and meet with the families.
A hamburger when they go home.
Yes.
And you know, you notice so much of change in them.
Emotional.
And, and then the emotional attachment that they're dealing with things in their life and you're trying to help them get through it. And then oftentimes, you wind up trying to help the parents overcome things.
Right.
So then they can help the child.
Yeah.
So that, I, I thank God for all of the coaches and those, the pastors and ministers, all of our city councilmen. Thank you, Facebook family. Uh, thank you Dominion family, I love you all. And this is a great opportunity, this won't be. And then oftentimes you wind up trying to help the parents overcome things.
Right.
So then they can help the child.
Yeah.
So that, I, I thank God for all of the coaches and those, the pastors and ministers, all of our city councilmen. Thank you Facebook family. Uh, thank you Dominion family. I love you all. And this is a great opportunity. This won't be our last time.
Yes, thank you.
We're, we're gonna do this at least once a month. Um, I'm, I'm calling Montrees out on it now, so.
Hey, I like that you did that cuz he's always calling people out on stuff.
If he skipped me and don't have me on, y'all know it's his fault, not mine.
Y'all see that. But councilman, to that point, uh.
All my St. Francis brothers, what's up, baby?
What, uh, who, how can people reach you? Because like you said, you don't really do social media. You have it, but what's some ways that, uh, residents, friends, family can reach out to you? That's not overwhelming.
If, if you could go to, uh, the city of Toledo, email, you can reach me at john.hobbs@toledo.ohio.gov.
One more time.
I think it's john.hobbs@toledo.ohio.gov. I also have a phone number, which I don't know yet cuz I just got my phone and I don't, I don't have any cards yet, so I don't know my phone number. I will get it to Montrees and Leah to, uh, but, and when you call, please understand that I truly am going to do my best to get to the bottom of whatever the issue is. Just give me a chance to do it. I'm learning. I wanna do things the right way. I don't have politically correct answers. I'm not gonna song and dance. I'm giving you the truth as it has been given to me. And has not always, truth has not always been comfortable for me. But I promise you, when I adjusted my attitude to receive truth, it made me a better person. And so I'm asking you all to please, when you hear things said or somebody said John Hobbs, ta- step back, listen to it. Was it truth spoken? Was it, was it something valid? Um, can I grow from that? Uh, one, one of, uh, uh, one of the guys, uh, one of the people that mentored me in coaching, Coach Lewis Davis. Um, and he mentored me in coaching. And there were times that it wasn't comfortable what he was saying to me. But when he pulled my coat tail on things and I got out of my feelings, I understood what he was saying was to make me better. And so, um, that's what I'm asking you all to do. Be patient with me and help me be better. I wanna be better.
Yeah.
Councilman McPherson, I wanna be better. Dr. Whitman, I wanna be better. Councilman Williams, I wanna be better. Help me be better. I need your information. I need your intelligence. I need your input.
That's right.
But I am a human being. So please, let's do this respectfully and, and, and let's uphold each other. And Montrees and Leah and myself are an example that we can pull each other up and we don't have to pull somebody down. And Dewan, I hope that we can somehow, I'm willing to engage. This is a conversation we need to have. Cuz I remember being your age and being frustrated about things and feeling like where could I really voice my opinion without being dogged and looked at a certain way.
And he knew you.
If we can, if we can set up a, a, a larger area, a platform or something to do that, let, let's sit down and do it.
I'm glad that you, you mentioned that.
Maybe that could be a podcast.
Yeah.
I swear, I was, I was gonna get to that. I was about to say a podcast, but I was gonna say, like, do you need somebody to help you with your social media presence? So like.
Yes.
I love that.
Yes, yes, I do.
Uh, and, and that's why, man, he, when you, when he tell you his story and when JB, when you need pictures taken, she's a photographer too. You have that, but I, I would like to say.
What's up Jay Hobbs?
I would like for you and, uh, other city council folks, the other eight, and I'm talking about from Cherry to all of them. Delaney, uh, Dr. Adams, all of them and our other.
Dr. Adams, what a giant. What a giant.
I would like for them to always, please keep in mind moving forward, Councilman Hobbs. Let's invest and put the funding back into our neighborhood centers. Let's put the individuals. Let's get them trained to get the, the, the Douglas Centers, the Friendly Centers, the, the Kent, the Wayman, the Kent Branch, because those were vital. You said the Catholic Club, I heard you say earlier.
Yes.
Those were pillars in our neighborhoods. I had the, the fortune and the opportunity to work under Bill Mangrum. Work under, uh, Mr. Ray Lothrie, rest in heaven. Mr. John Edwards over at Humadop.
Yes.
So I would love Mr. Ha- uh, Councilman Hobbs, that we give people like Dewan and younger people, those community center access. Cuz it saved the Monroe Neighborhood Center, uh, putting individuals in there with compensation. I ain't saying a whole lot cuz some of us are doing it for a little bit of nothing.
Yes.
Uh, Zara says, I'll send it for a referral, my favorite statement from a council.
What's up Zar? Zar is the volleyball coach at Scott High School, another young woman who worked her butt off. I watched Zar, even when they would lose, she would bring those girls together and just cheer them on, building their confidence, building their self-esteem. A great young lady. Hey Zar.
I see, uh, my brother Marlo Barnes, he said, I'm a single dad of three, need help with food, milk and peppers. Please y'all, can y'all help? Hell yeah, we helping.
You know we helping.
And you just inbox Big Trees on the City Park League page. If anybody else would like to help the brother, I see, hell yeah, we helping. We got you, man. Uh, and I might even go buy the milk, brother, in the peppers. I don't know what size, so you have to tell me.
Well, he's in New Orleans, so.
Okay, so that's why he need the cash app? And he's in New Orleans?
And I, I love the fact that he was willing to let people know, hey, I need help, you know?
And he's calling from New Orleans?
He's all the way from New Orleans.
Wow, hell yeah, we coming your way, man. Hit the love button. Hit the hearts. I see your cash app. Uh, you, you, you can expect that to come. Councilman, uh, I wanna thank you, uh, so much and thank you for taking the time to mention those that's on your live.
What's up Kels Balkum?
Uh, that's Kenley, that's the Balkum family.
What's up, baby?
Can I, can I mention one more thing before we get ready to wrap it up and stuff?
Yes, sir.
So like when you talk about putting funding into like the, into the centers and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Like, but like make sure it's the right funding, like get the right stuff, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Like people interested in filming and all that and basketball and like just get the right stuff.
So you're saying like create the right programs?
Yeah, create the right programs. Don't just make anything.
And I think that's important, Dewan. See, it's important for young people like you, if, you know, if we can come, come together and create funding for, um, these types of clubs. We need to put young people like him in a position of like being a consultant. We are older, yes, we have more wisdom, but these young kids, they know a lot more, you know, than we do as far as when it comes to technology and you know, just what's going on, uh, in IT and just with all these different things. We need to put our young people in places and in positions to teach us stuff too.
Absolutely. And that's a great point, Leah and, and Councilman Hobbs, you know that it, the game has changed. It ain't just about recreation and sports anymore. There's other activities that young people, and you are, you are a dad, that we can expose our kids to. So, uh, I do know that as Dewan said, we put, we listen to them, putting in the things that they would like to do. We just, it's, we just make sure that they have access to it cuz we got it. It ain't nothing we can't do. This brother calling from, uh, Louisiana and he gonna get help from Toledo today.
That's right.
On the four one nine grind. Uh, I thank you for showing your mom, Councilman Hobbs, how to tune into this show because this is a show. You could say, what's up baby? And we wanna record him saying that cuz that's gonna be a part of our show in the morning that we could control our narrative. And councilman, before we leave any last words on how important.
Please, please wear your mask.
Yes.
Do your six foot distancing and constantly wash your hands because listen, this virus is real.
You wanna do it on your live here? Walk it like you talking.
We're, we're doing our stuff in here like we supposed to. Believe me, we are. Um, but the other thing is, is listen, I don't care who you vote for. I don't care. That, that's none of my business. I'm not concerned with that. I am asking everyone to please go out and vote. I don't, whoever you vote for, whatever party you affiliate with, that's your business. That's great, but at least go vote. We had a million African Americans stay home the last time we voted. And all I'm saying to you is blood, sweat and cheers were shared, was shed for us to have the right to vote.
That's right.
So please go vote. Vote for whoever you vote for, but at least exercise the right to vote. What's going on Ian English, your honor? What's going on, your honor? Brother Myron DuHart, what's going on?
Thank y'all to both of those. And you, I just wanted.
What's up Zay?
Uh, add to that, Councilman Hobbs, Ohio has over near, uh, over eleven million people in the state of Ohio. At this time, we have over registered voters, eight million registered voters. So people are taking heed. And the black community, like you said, exercise that vote.
Yes. However you vote, just go vote. Please, just go vote. That's all I'm asking you to do. And I, it's raining today. Uh, brothers, we done stood in the rain for a whole lot of other stuff.
And you came in wet today. You went out and voted today.
Oh, let's go. Uh, well, I had, uh, I had another meeting before I came here and, uh, but I am going.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, get that taken care of, but thank you all. Thank you, big bro. Look here, baby. It's twenty twenty, dark skinned brothers is in charge. You serious, you fellas, baby. This ain't the eighties no more. No L the bars.
At the four one nine grind studio, Leah, we had such a great time.
Thank you so much for coming in Pastor Hobbs.
He shaped us today. He gave us a word.
Gave us a real word.
Uh, about living, about being accountable and taking action. It is the all and, all new Rise and Grind Morning Show. We wanna thank our sponsors, Lima Humadop, Hot Box, Greater New Psalmist and Miss Perfect.
Boutique.
Uh, we wanna thank all of our sponsors. And if you would like to be a sponsor of this show, please vote us. Best local podcast. Send your information to info@thefouroneign grind dot com. Tomorrow, we got a great show underway. It might, if y'all don't like spiders, y'all gonna like this spider. I can tell you.